Yes. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the San Rafael City Council Special Meeting for Monday, December 5th, 2022. We're getting an awesome echo. We're gonna fix the echo. Okay. I will request that the city clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
President.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. Welcome. We are starting a little bit earlier this evening. We had originally hoped we are going to have a swearing in ceremony for Councilmember Bushy and Councilmember Hill, but as the election just got ratified this morning, that wonderful ceremony will happen at our next meeting, and there will be cupcakes, so we encourage people to come on down to celebrate. The only other item I wanted to mention during opening remarks is to welcome our new Director of Economic Development, Micah Hinkle, has started, and we look forward to hearing from him, probably not tonight, but at future meetings in regards to economic development. So with that, we're glad that you're here for the early 6:30 part of the meeting. We'll be going through the consent calendar and some reports, and then we'll get to the public hearings at 7:00 PM. I will invite the city clerk to share with folks how they can comment this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-900-9128 and using the meeting ID 817-3692-0337 and pressing star nine to raise your hand for comments, or you can comment directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and use the raised hand feature. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can email us at city.clerk@cityofsanarfel.org and displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. You can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable the feature.
Thank you. So the first item is getting right into our city manager and council member reports, so I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. I was going to mention the swearing in that isn't taking place tonight as well, so thank you for doing that. And we may actually hear from Micah Hinkle, our new Economic Development Director, tonight on the BID item. I think he was gonna introduce that one for us along with Victoria Lim. But the few announcements that I did want to make is we are still accepting nominations for the 2023 Richard O'Brien and the Mary Ferrario O'Brien Public Service Award. And the intent of that award is to recognize the San Rafael community member who's made exceptional contributions to the city, and it receives a $2,500 cash award from the Marin Community Foundation and is also recognized through other city events. So anyone can nominate. There's a nomination form on our webpage. And there's also eligibility criteria in the nomination form. It's at cityofsanarfel.org-public-service-award. And if that's too clunky, you can type in, I checked this today, just "public service award" in our search bar, and it pops right up. So we're accepting nominations of that through January 13 of 2023, so that we're still a little over a month on that one. We also have vacancies on a number of San Rafael boards and commissions that we just wanted to announce. It's on tonight's consent calendar as well, but just to speak to it, there's recruiting for one position that's in District One. Several of our planning commission seats are now by district, and it's the District One or the South Representative. That's largely the Canal Neighborhood, Spinnaker, Bay Point, parts of Bret Hark, that part, that section of our community. The Pickleweed Advisory Committee and the ADA Access Advisory Committee. And so we're accepting nominations, applications for those positions through December 21st or until those are filled. And then just lastly, we do have a couple holiday events still in the calendar that are coming up. Not this weekend, but next weekend, there's the San Rafael Lighted Boat Parade on Saturday, December 17th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. So it's been a Marin County tradition since 1966, so it's been a long time. And I know, in fact, that it happened.
All right, are we back? We're back. We're back. Sorry about that, folks. It happens sometimes, so thank you for getting us back online. We were in the middle of council member reports, and I just turned to Councilmember Hill to give a report out.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Yes, it was indeed a holiday week, I'll call it, during the Thanksgiving holiday. I did attend the, on Saturday, November 26th, the San Rafael Parade of Lights in downtown San Rafael. Saw families and children out enjoying the festivities. Thank you to all the businesses and community members for coming out to celebrate the season. Special shout out to Sarah Tippel, Executive Director of the Business Improvement District, Jed Green and the entire Business Improvement District membership for planning and having a wonderful event. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Along with the mayor, I attended the San Rafael Sanitation District meeting. It was routine and efficiently executed. I have also attended the Locklomen Oversight Committee meeting, which was held during Thanksgiving week, and when with Mr. Mihon present, I must bring to everyone's attention that the kayak launch ramp is up and running at Locklomen, so that's very good news. And also, the path has been, it was closed for a while. It has been repaired, and it is reopened as well, so things are going well on the sort of waterfront area in the Locklomen development. Unfortunately, the center bit of housing remains on pause, and the commercial construction remains on pause. To end on a happy note, I can report that the boats are being lighted. I saw them on my way in, so they're all gearing up for the parade on Saturday.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to echo the sentiment from Councilmember Hill about Winter Wonderland. It was really fun. So so many people in the community that I haven't seen since before the pandemic, so a huge thank you to the BID, the Downtown Improvement District, and Sarah Tippel, and all the businesses that they were part of the committee, because as a former business owner, I know for the BID, not only you have to do your work as a business, but also helping prepare these great events. So it was great. And then last week, with our Mayor Kate, we attended the East San Rafael Parking Task Force with recommendations and improvements in the East San Rafael and in the canal. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will report out on my last meeting that I attended at Marin Transit as part of the mayor's Marin County Council Members and Mayor Representative. Councilmember Bushy is the new representative, and she'll start in January. They gave me a lovely resolution with lots of things in it that, well, some of it sounded true. No, it was very nice. It was very lovely. It was very lovely. No, I was I was a member there for six years, which I didn't realize that had gone gone quickly. We had a great meeting. Marin Transit, when you look at September of 2019, as compared to September 2022, we're at 83% of pre-COVID ridership, and when you look at all the Bay Area agencies in terms of percentages, that's the highest in the Bay Area. In terms of how that manifests in actual numbers, that month, there were nearly 240,000 riders. So Marin Transit continues to be a necessary and important part of our transit system. Today, we also approved a short-range transit plan. We had a clean financial audit, which is always good to report, and we approved a safety plan, which unfortunately, we need to do in this day and age because of increased assaults on bus drivers. So we now have, we had a plan already, but just reviewed it and made it even more robust to keep those folks safe. So look forward to your report out come January and all the work that we get to do with Marin Transit. So with that, we'll see if there's any public comment on either the city manager or council member reports. But let me first look into the chamber. Is there anyone here who'd like to make a comment on any of those items? Not seen anyone. Is there anyone virtually?
I see no hands raised, and I'll remind everyone, if you'd like to provide public comment, you can use the raise hand feature or press star nine if you're calling in, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. We will move to the consent calendar. I request that we poll item 2C for special conversation and discussion. Are there any other items that my colleagues would like to pull? Not seen any. Are there any comments from the public on the consent calendar? Let me see. Wait. Yep. All right. I don't see anyone here on items not including 2C. Don't see anyone in the room. Is there anyone virtually?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Okay. I would accept a motion on the items not including 2C.
I'll make a motion to accept our consent calendar except for 2C.
Second. Moved in second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. So 2C, which was polled, was the donation of open space on the Gold Hill grade. And I think the city attorney wanted to make a few comments, and there's some folks here in the room that we wanted to recognize as well on this item.
I just wanted to acknowledge Don Dickinson and Ralph Mahin, who are present in the council chambers, two community members who put a lot of their time and effort into this project. It's an area that I know is near and dear to them. It certainly is. For me, I've been hiking in and around the area for the past 50-plus years or so, and was amazed to discover that this basically landlocked parcel was one that was potentially capable of development, although it would have been a bit of a challenge for the property owner. But on behalf of the community, I'm just very grateful to Ralph and Don for their efforts in securing this very critical link to our open space.
Thank you. Would either of you want to come and comment on this item? No, okay. Well, thank you both for what you've done. As the city attorney already said, it is perfectly positioned, and for the city to accept it, and we're glad that you've been able to work with city staff, which Don pulled me aside prior to the meeting and said city staff has been excellent in terms of getting this done before the end of the year. So any comment from the chambers on this item? I know you two passed. Okay, anyone virtually like to comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a couple moments. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back for a motion on this item.
So Mayor Kate, can I just?
Yes, oh, please, or comment. Yes.
So in addition to Marin Open Space, thank you again, just to thank the 2017 staff and council for adopting the policy for open space acquisition that made, I think, this decision at least have a framed criteria and was made, I think, hopefully, a lot more streamlined to accept it. So thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to make a motion on this item?
I move that, oh, sorry, I need to make sure I'm up on the right page. I move that we adopt a resolution accepting the offer of donation from Marin Open Space Trust of vacant lot on Gold Hill Grade APN 015-250-34 to the city in fee for permanent open space and authorizing the city manager to execute. On behalf of the city, all documents required to effectuate such conveyance.
There a second?
Second.
Moved in second. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaren Skoladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. So with that, this is a special meeting, and I'm now going to adjourn it. But don't go away. At seven o'clock, we're going to have public hearings, so we will reconvene at seven P M. Thank you. twenty twenty-two. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilmember Anne Gladdy.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here. We met in closed session prior to this meeting. Is there anything to report out? City Attorney.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you. Welcome. We have a packed agenda tonight. We actually met a little bit earlier. We started and we had council member report, city manager report, and the consent agenda at six thirty, so we can get right into our public hearing this evening. So before we get into that, you are welcome to speak on any item that is not on tonight's agenda, and we will start with that. Actually, I need the the city clerk to share how people can participate who are not in the room.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. This meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and use the meeting ID eight one seven three six nine two zero three three seven pound and pressing star nine to raise their hand for comment, or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda. And you can use the raise hand feature through Zoom as well. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can email us at city dot clerk at city of centerfell.org and displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though you're not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of Centerfell you reside in, or if you're from outside of Centerfell. And we are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting, and you can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable the feature. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll start the meeting with open time for public expression for any item not on tonight's agenda. I'll look around the chamber and see if anyone would like to approach and give comments. Not seen anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment.
I will turn it over to Director Judice.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. And before I pass it over to Barry and Alexis, I did want to say a couple of things. Um, I wanted to start with just recognizing that this has been a different, a very different housing element than prior years. For us, it was an opportunity to do things a little bit differently, and it started out with your council appointing a working group that was really diverse and provided really great input on how we dealt with the housing element. The working group met monthly and it was a very meaningful, each, each meeting was very meaningful. We received a great input and we really wanted it to play out well and make sure that we received the input that we wanted to that the working group wanted to provide, and it ended up resulting in a few more meetings than we had expected originally. Um, but it really informed our document and it allowed us to do additional outreach. The other thing that happened is that HCD, we started to see letters that were submitted by HCD in response to the housing elements from Southern California. So we took that time to look at those letters and respond to those kind of proactively in our housing element. So um, hopefully, we um, did goodbye um, HCD's request. I think the one thing I wanted to just kind of finalize before I pass it over to Barry is that um, the city, your city council has done a really great job at addressing the housing crisis, and we really wanted to hide this document to highlight that, but also demonstrate that we are continuing to work and will continue to work on addressing the housing crisis as we move forward through this next cycle. So with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Barry and Alexis and Liz Darby.
Thank you. Welcome.
Great. Good evening, council. I'm going to share the screen here so that we can all uh, see the presentation. I'm used to doing this on Zoom, but hopefully you can all see that.
Yes, we can.
Great.
Thank you.
And as, as Ally said, I'm Barry Miller, the consulting project manager for the Housing Element Update. I'll introduce the team as we go along. We're really pleased to be here this evening. I do want to clarify that the purpose of tonight's meeting is to request council authorization to submit this document to the state Housing and Community Development Department for their preliminary review. Uh, this is not the evening where we're asking you to adopt the housing element. Uh, you will be doing that the early part of twenty twenty-three. The purpose of the submittal to the state is to get their preliminary comments on the document. They will issue a findings letter and send that to us. We will need to respond to the findings letter and incorporate changes to the document and then bring it back first to the planning commission and to the council for adoption. So in terms of tonight's presentation, uh, we are going to begin by providing some context for the housing element. Uh, Liz Darby is going to provide us with an overview of the affirmatively furthering fair housing requirement and how it shaped our outreach efforts. I'll be providing some highlights of the document itself. Alexis Captainian, Housing Program Manager, will be providing an overview of the goals, policies, and programs, and then we'll close with the timeline and next steps. So you've seen this slide before. I think most folks who have seen our presentations have seen this slide. This is a required element of the San Rafael General Plan. The city updated the rest of the general plan a few years ago. It was adopted in August of twenty twenty-one, and that really set the framework for how the city will grow over the next twenty years. So this element builds on that work and it provides an approach to meeting our housing needs that's consistent with the broader long-range city vision. Like a lot of the other elements, like all of the other elements of the general plan, this is based on data and community engagement. There's a lot of data in the housing element. It's statutorily required. The contents are very, very prescriptive and are set by state law. So there are some important differences between the housing element and the other elements of the general plan. The planning period is eight years. We have a twenty-year general plan, but this really looks at the next eight years, and that is set by state law. We're moving into what's called the sixth cycle housing element. The cycle we're currently in goes from January twenty fifteen to the end of January twenty twenty-three, and you can see the next six years ahead or eight years ahead in the sixth cycle. Another unique aspect is that this has to be submitted to the state for their certification. No other element of the general plan has that requirement. And we must demonstrate through this document to the state that we are doing our fair share and accommodating our fair share of the region's housing needs. So before we get into the contents of the element, I have just a few slides to answer this very basic question. Really more for the benefit of those who may be watching this presentation or less familiar with the housing element, which is why does this matter? During the last ten years, the Bay Area added one point three million jobs and produced a hundred and forty thousand housing units, or one housing unit for every nine jobs created. In Marin County, there were twenty-three thousand jobs added between twenty-ten and twenty-twenty and thirteen hundred housing units, or one housing unit for every eighteen jobs that were created. The imbalance has had a number of impacts. The median home price in San Rafael was six hundred and forty thousand dollars in twenty-twelve. Today, it's one point five million. And although we've seen a leveling out of prices in the last six months, they're still thirty percent higher than they were just three years ago. Rents have gone up to making it less affordable for more households. The lack of affordable housing in the community has had a number of compounding consequences. It's led to longer commutes. It's led to a high rate of overcrowding in rental apartments. It's led to a large number of cost-burdened households. We have twenty-nine percent of San Rafael's renters that are paying more than half of their household incomes on their housing, on their rental housing costs. And it's led to a labor shortage as some of our workforce relocates out of the region to places where housing is more affordable. We've also seen a persistent divide between race and ethnic groups in the city with a significant gap between conditions for white and non-white households. Home ownership is just one of several metrics that illustrates this gap with sixty-one percent of our white non, our white, non-Hispanic households owning a home compared to just fourteen percent of our Hispanic and Latino households. So as we've shared from the first presentation on, we've, we've, we're facing a housing element that's very different than the ones that came before it, and the state has raised the bar for what it expects the housing element to cover. They've also raised the bar for what constitutes what they call substantial compliance with the government code, meaning it's harder to get a housing element certified than it used to be, and the consequences for inaction, whether it's not getting certified or not following through on the commitments and programs that you have in your element, are much greater than they used to be. We've shared this slide with you before. It shows the underlying factor between, behind the housing element, which is what we call the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. Each region in the state is assigned a quantity of housing that it must plan for, and that quantity is divided up among the cities and the counties by the Association of Bay Area Governments. In our case, it's done by the regional council in each part of California. The region's assignment for twenty twenty-three to twenty thirty-one was four hundred and forty-one thousand housing units. In other words, we as a region, nine counties, need to plan for four hundred and forty-one thousand housing units in the next eight years to balance our supply and demand. Marin County got three percent of that large total, and San Rafael got about a quarter of Marin County's total, which still is thirty-two hundred and twenty units. Now, the two pies you see, the pie at the top is the allocation for the current housing element, which is one thousand seven units, including three hundred and eighty-eight that are affordable to low and very low-income households. The uh, pie on the bottom is the new allocation, which is three times as large. And as you can see here on the bottom left, the income thresholds are fairly high in Marin County, so that a low-income household of four is a household that earns less than a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars a year. For a household of one, for a single person, it's a hundred and nine, it's a hundred and four thousand, and for a two-person household, it's a hundred and nineteen thousand. So if you're a single person in Marin County, you're low income if you're earning less than a hundred and four thousand dollars. So we're talking about housing for our workforce here. Here's the process that we followed for the housing element update. We started in fall twenty twenty-one with the development of our engagement strategy, creation of a working group, and evaluation of the last housing element. A year ago, we completed the Housing Element Needs Assessment and continued our outreach through the working group and meetings with community-based organizations and civic groups. During the spring, we completed the sites analysis and inventory. This was followed by an evaluation of constraints to the development of housing over the summer, including two additional workshops and meetings. This led to the drafting of policies and programs in early summer and fall, and the document was published on November fourth, two thousand twenty-two as a draft. So at this point, I'm going to ask my colleague Liz Darby to walk you through several slides that deal with the affirmatively furthering fair housing mandate.
Thanks, Barry, and good evening, everyone. Um, as Ally and Barry referenced, this is a very different housing element than we've seen before. And what makes this housing element particularly different is our requirement to affirmatively further fair housing. In general, affirm, affirmatively furthering fair housing mean, means taking meaningful actions in addition to combating discrimination that overcome patterns of segregation and foster inclusive communities. And it releases us from barriers that restrict access to opportunities. And in addition to making sure that we affirmatively further fair housing, the barriers that we've identified as part of our housing element must be part of our meaningful actions with specific timelines and outcomes. While identifying the barriers to housing in general and affordable housing in particular, the city is required to promote inclusive communities, advance true fair housing choice for all residents, address racial and economic disparities through our government programs, policies, and operations, and ensure that the goals and programs that we submit in this housing element address those barriers. As part of our strategy to address historic discriminatory policies, while increasing opportunities for actual and true fair housing choice, we must go beyond what we've done before. And we must ensure that we are developing strategies that are meaningful and impactful for the people who are most directly affected by our policies. That includes hearing from people who have previously not been part of our conversation, who may not have been part of our housing choice decision-making, and those include people of color, people with disabilities, seniors, low-income residents, families with children, and people experiencing homelessness. Once the fair housing and tributing factors were identified, it was critical that we created strategies with specific timelines and goals. Goals should consider things like mobility strategies, which could include increasing the number of section eight vouchers here in the city. We need to create new housing in high-resourced communities, not only in our underserved resident communities. We must develop policies and strategies that preserve existing affordable housing, and we must invest in our under-resourced communities with community assets. We also must address the growing trend towards gentrification and develop strategies that decrease displacement of our existing residents. And of course, we have to ensure all residents are aware of their civil rights as tenants and homeowners. Fair housing rights are civil rights laws, and the city must commit to continued outreach and education for all of our residents. Not all of these programs have to be housing programs in particular. We know that many of our communities face challenges in transportation, safety, overcrowding, and access to healthy foods and financial resources. Those contributing factors must also be addressed in order to develop strategies that improve neighborhoods and increase community resources. Community engagement is a priority with HCD, and the city conducted a robust community engagement effort that will continue even after we submit our housing element. The city has spent a great deal of time working and listening to community voices, some of whom have never spoken to us directly before. And we learned a great deal. Much of what we heard, we included in our goals, policies, and programs, and in many ways makes this housing element one that will not just sit on the shelves. And finally, while the city's community outreach and resident engagement included many individuals, groups, and organizations, the city's Housing Element Working Group provided leadership and guidance in our efforts to ensure we are accountable, not only to the work that we do, but also to the people they insisted that we reach. This group of dedicated professionals, residents, and tireless advocates made this housing element stronger and in many ways more relevant.
and cost burden, which is defined as the percentage of your income that you spend on rent or your mortgage. The element also evaluates the housing needs of specific populations in the city, including older adults, persons with disabilities and those experiencing homelessness, among others. There's a lot of information in this chapter that's drawn from the new twenty twenty census. So this will be the first place that it's been kind of digested and processed for public review. Uh, some is from the American Community Survey and some from other sources, and it's supplemented by an appendix that focused specifically on fair housing data and issues. Chapter four is the housing needs assessment. This is again a mandatory part of the housing element. It is an inventory of uh, one hundred and twelve sites in the city that have the capacity to help us meet our regional housing needs allocation. So it is really a comprehensive inventory. There are maps included. Uh, this is one area where the state has again raised the bar. There are new requirements for what constitutes an adequate site. For instance, if we're saying a site is available for housing, but there's something on that site, we have to explain why we think that site is, it's reasonable to assume that site will be available in the next eight years. So the chapter breaks down our housing sites into the categories you see here and includes estimates of the number of units that can be accommodated on each property. Here's a summary table showing housing potential by the different categories that are looked at in this chapter. And again, I won't go through this in detail. I think the key takeaway here is that we do have adequate capacity to meet the regional housing need without rezoning. And this is in part because we did this housing element immediately after a general plan update and a downtown precise plan that both were very intentional in creating capacity to meet our future needs. The constraints chapter, again, one of the most important parts of the housing element. It takes a hard look at the obstacles to building housing in the city. They're broadly defined as non-governmental and governmental constraints. Uh, the governmental constraints are things like zoning ordinances, fees, our permitting requirements and so forth. The non-government constraints are the things that we have less control over, like the price of lumber, the cost of land or the interest rates. Finally, chapter six is the housing action plan, and I'm going to turn this over to Alexis to walk you through the four goals of the housing element.
Thanks Barry and good evening, everyone. And so based on all of the components that Liz and Barry just described, the feedback from the community, the evaluation of the prior housing element, our needs assessment, uh, resources, constraints and the affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis. Uh, we drafted the next housing plan, which is chapter six. And the plan includes four goals, ending and preventing homelessness, furthering fair housing and undoing patterns of segregation, ensuring housing habitability and maintenance, and expanding housing, housing choices throughout the city. And in each goal has a set of policies and programs that are meant to move the city closer to achieving that goal. So while homelessness um, was part of some programs in the previous element, uh, we really felt like that um, was a prior, has been a city council priority consistently that the city has um, put a great deal of, of effort and strategic thinking into being a leader on this issue. And so we wanted to elevate it to um, a goal within uh, within the housing element. And the programs under this goal span um, supporting people who are experiencing homelessness uh, to find a path to stable housing through shelter and case management. Um, and also preventing people from becoming homeless in the first place, for instance, by promoting more affordable housing types. And homelessness has historically been under the city manager's office and, and a key aspect of this goal and its programs uh, will be bringing homelessness and housing together under one division in community development and hiring additional staff to work across these issue areas. Under our fair housing goal, one of the major program focus areas is on strengthening public information and engagement. And that's based in part on some feedbacks that we received that many community members are not familiar with existing housing laws and resources. Um, it also includes a specific program to build capacity when the, within the Latinx community to participate in public processes. We also received significant feedback from community members and community-based organizations on the urgent need for additional tenant protections. And so we compiled that uh, list of um, proposed requests or policies um, into a program in the housing element that um, commits the city to um, convening stakeholders and evaluating those measures and choosing appropriate measures um, to adopt for tenant, additional tenant protections as well as looking at um, the city's existing measures. We also included a goal on housing habitability and maintenance. And this was also based on feedback provided during community workshops and through other channels. Tenants asked for more frequent inspections. Um, and so through the housing inspection program, we've committed to increasing the frequency of inspections for buildings with verified violations. Uh, and also working with our code enforcement team to evaluate the housing inspection program overall and identify opportunities to strengthen it. The final goal to meet housing is to um, is to meet housing needs through expanded housing choice. And it includes a range of programs to remove barriers to housing construction, increase opportunities for housing in high resource areas through encouraging construction of ADUs and maintaining inclusionary housing requirements. Um, and also increasing options for special needs populations such as older adults, people with disabilities and, and large families. And so um, Liz put these five themes up before. These are the five um, sort of categories or um, ways to affirmative action, action channels to affirmatively further fair housing. And one thing that we've um, been hearing from other jurisdictions is that um, it's, it's helpful um, in submitting to HCD to include a matrix that really specifically shows your quantifiable um, commitments um, and objectives. And so on the next slide, I've included, this is just a sampling of a couple and kind of a reformatting of the information in chapter six that we'd like to pull down and add um, at the end of chapter six, um, to really show, okay, what is the program? What's our specific commitment? The timeline, what geographic area is this targeting? And then finally, what is, what is our, our specific metric that we want to hit? Um, and so um, that I think has been, as we've started putting that together, it's been an extremely helpful um, exercise and also showing us, you know, where are we really solid and where do we kind of need to, to add some additional um, quantifiable um, metrics? With that, I'm going to pass it back to Barry to go over next steps in the process.
And this is our final slide. Uh, it lays out the process from this point forward. It also includes what we've um, done since the release of the draft on November fourth. There was a planning commission meeting on November fifteenth, and the commission did recommend that the council authorize staff to submit the document. Uh, there, the thirty-day review period for the, what we call the HCD draft actually ended today. Uh, so this meeting is timely. And the state requires that we now set aside ten business days to consider any comments that we received on the draft housing element before submitting it to the state and make appropriate revisions. So I want to acknowledge we did receive several letters in the last couple of days. I think we've provided those to the council and we'll be considering those uh, in terms of making potential revisions. We'll also be taking feedback from the council this evening and considering your guidance and feedback uh, prior to submitting this to the state. Once this is submitted to HCD, they have a statutory uh, review period of up to ninety days. Uh, they used to do this in two to three weeks. They're now taking the full ninety days. Uh, part of the reason for that is that they have a pretty big backlog right now, not just with Bay Area uh, communities coming in with their elements, but also all of the Southern California communities whose elements were due a year ago, who are either late or submitted documents that were found to be out of compliance and are now back in the queue for um, for review. Once we receive the state comments, we will be making revisions in response and bringing this back as a public review draft with appropriate edits. You'll see any changes from the document you have before you tonight and the document you'll get for public review uh, in track change format. So you'll know exactly what was changed and what the state said. Uh, there will be a planning commission hearing and a council hearing uh, at which time the, the document will be adopted. We're trying to do this so that we can get state certification before May thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three. And that concludes the presentation. We're happy to answer questions and hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Barry. Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Alexis. A lot of information distilled in a very clear way. So thank you so much. Uh, we'll start with questions from the council. Uh, Vice Mayor, any questions?
I do have a question. Um, and thank you for the update in the report and all the documents that are available online. Uh, can you, I believe it was goal two that talked about relocation verse, and I was wondering if you could provide a little bit more background in terms of what, what does relocation reference refer to exactly? What is that in practice versus housing?
So the, the city has two uh, relocation assistance ordinances um, or policies. One is specific to the opportunity zone in the canal. And the other is a citywide ordinance, but it um, applies specifically to people um, with low income. And um, in both of these cases, um, it applies when there's a no-fault eviction. So not something like non-payment of rent or a nuisance, but um, in cases where uh, the landlord is gonna um, renovate the unit um, and do substantial rehabilitation and the tenant can't, can no longer um, inhabit the unit. Um, we have requirements of a payment to be made. There's required noticing, but also a payment made thirty days in advance of the um, date that the tenant needs to vacate. Um, and so the, the um, the policy that we've included um, is based on, based on recent experience, we've, we've kind of um, realized where the tool has fallen short in, in some ways. And um, I think one of those ways is um, we don't have any tools to regulate buyout agreements, and we've, we've seen buyout agreements that um, I think have, have um, been challenging and difficult and, and um, could be better communicated, communicated in the language of the tenant. Um, and so I think we're really wanting to put that um, as something that we address in the near future to try to strengthen that ordinance now that we've seen kind of um, how it's implemented in this first stage. This is specifically the opportunity zone ordinance. Um, the other thing I want to acknowledge, um, there was a letter that was submitted by the nonprofit coalition. And they made a, I think, a, a really strong recommendation around putting relocation assistance um, into the just cause section and really making it clear um, that that's not our first go-to strategy, right? We don't want to relocate tenants. We want to um, prevent displacement and that, but that, that's one of the tools later on in the toolbox. And so I just wanted to also acknowledge that that feedback came in on Friday.
Okay, great.
Did that answer your question, Councilmember?
Yes, thank you. Um, another question. So I was trying to, to do a little bit of cross-referencing between the plan, um, general plan, equity, diversity, inclusion chapter and how that relates to the housing element. And I don't know whether it's applicable to cross-reference those two. I mean, I know that a lot of this is being driven within the housing element, but some of the language I felt was stronger in the um, I was gonna say DEI, but it's E, EDI um, report on the plan. So I was, I was wondering if there was a direct um, tie-in with those two and if it would be appropriate to actually do some actual referencing um, in relation to the housing element.
Yeah, it's a, a good point. Then there is, there's some overlap between the two documents, and we actually drew some of the housing element policies from the um, EDI element. Um, so it is appropriate, I think, to include some cross-references and we can look at uh, at doing that in the draft.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bushy, any questions?
Just one really specific one. Um, overall fantastic uh, job. Um, as, as always, moving this um, process onto the next level. I was uh, doing a little bit of a deep dive into some of the, the data, and I was really surprised at the complaint data to the Marin County uh, uh, fair, fair housing on authority and how it was um, so um, comprised of data that shows that the number one complaint is from uh, disabled residents. Um, by like, like for years, it's been like two-thirds of the complaints of discrimination have been on, based on disabilities. And I'm, I'm wondering um, if there are places we could do more on that, on that, that we should be responsive. We should have a data-driven response to that.
I mean, if you don't mind, I'll take it. So fair housing of Northern California actually has a lot of data, a lot of statistics and what has happened over time. They use a pretty comprehensive approach of doing interviews and talking directly with people and doing some blind um, interviews to see where the discrimination is. And we have found consistently and shockingly, a lot of it is around ADA. A lot of it is around people making landlords making reasonable accommodation. And part of that, I think, is the disconnect between what reasonable accommodation really is um, and how a landlord could help implement it. And so I think that part of the work that we're going to be planning to do in the housing element is to take a deep dive here at the city. Take a look at what are the, if those complaints are happening in our city, where, how often, how frequently and how we can address it. And we think that, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Alexis, a lot of it is going to be around education.
Yes, that, and that would be something we can actually um,
We can actually do.
We can actually do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you. I had a, a few questions. Um, in uh, program six dot four dot one, programs to end and prevent homelessness. Uh, it made mention of uh, the creation of a housing and homelessness division. Um, I just wanted to clarify the details because it said the hiring of an assistant director and then staff. I don't know if you could just clarify what the total headcount would be at the conclusion of the uh, creation of the department? Or division, rather.
Thank you, yeah. So um, I think it was in the last budget cycle, um, staff requested um, kind of that reorganization and requested that um, the creation of an assistant director. Um, so we're working on that. We're working on kind of structuring what that might look like. Uh, but it is in, in, has been included in the budget.
That's great. Thank you for clarifying that. And then uh, my next question is on the um, again, the six dot four dot four programs to meet housing needs uh, is the funding and affordability, uh, funding for affordable housing. Um, and I noticed that it said two million over um, eight years. And I thought that was kind of a, a small number compared to how we've been using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund over the last just two years. Seems like it was a, a very small amount. Um, I had noted that in two thousand, or in twenty twenty-two, we allocated two point six million and twenty twenty-one, one point six million. So two million over eight years seemed really small. So I just want to see if we could expand that.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that number. Um, and Alexis, jump, feel free to jump in if you want to add anything to it. But we did actually in the last couple of years, we received quite a chunk of money um, that was deposited into the um, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And that was because we allowed certain buyouts to allow development to continue to happen. And so that number, I mean, it is, it's a conservative number. We don't really know what that number will ultimately, ultimately be. We wanted to, we're thinking about a number that would be, where we would be successful. Um, but we can take a look at that again. Um, Alexis, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to it.
Yeah, maybe it's possible because it sounds like we're heavily dependent on in lieu fees and other things to fund Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Maybe it's okay to, are we okay? Would, maybe it's more in making sure we're making a hard commitment to HCD uh, that we were going conservative rather than saying we'll consume as much as our Affordable Housing Trust Fund is, is restored or something like that.
Yeah, and we can take a look at um, what we expect in terms of the number of units over the eight-year cycle and kind of, you know, speculate based on that, what it might be. And yeah, again, yeah, you're right. We don't want to speculate too high and then we're not meeting our goals and, but not too low that we're not really thinking about, you know, what we can do in terms of um, funding, assisting to fund affordable housing.
Thank you. And if I, my final question is, and I know this is um, it's related to displacement gentrification, which are opportunity zones. And I know that's, it's a, it's a challenging topic because it does seem like there are very few mechanisms that we have at the local level um, to create restorative um, ordinances uh, to make sure that displaced folks um, have um, more options. But are there any just um, staff comments on anything more we can do with respect to opportunity zone zones that uh, just feels like that that's a federal imposition that are, there, there aren't so many knobs and dials we can turn on that.
I can start and others can jump in as well. Um, I think, you know, I mentioned, I started the presentation with just um, recognizing that this has been a different housing cycle. It's really taken a lot of, a lot more time and a lot of effort and really allowing us to really dig deep in what we are, you know, could potentially do. are, you know, could potentially do. And so we've identified programs that would allow us to continue to evaluate, you know, where we can do more. And so that's in in our housing element now. And yeah, the next step would be to begin kind of assessing and analyzing programs that have worked elsewhere. So there's work to be done beyond this housing element. The housing element is one tool and we'll continue to to work beyond that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Yurin Skoladi.
Thank you. And thank you so much for the report and all the work with the community. My question is, I need to be follow up from Councilmember Hill. And again, we are talking about gentrification and specifically on the third point. What is, and I guess this is just one tool. But if we were to evaluate, for example, like in the opportunities zones, when you have a building with so many units, for instance, four hundred canal has ninety-nine units and they are getting displaced and for, you know, no cost. That's already happening and, you know, it's going to be gentrification. So what else can we do at this point if we were to evaluate having some rental control over a number of units? I mean, where are we in terms of timing with the housing element?
I think it's tricky to define what that thing could be. We, there are so many, there are different paths that have been identified. And really, our job is going to be in this next eight year cycle to look at all of those paths and bring in stakeholder groups that are affected, tenants, landlords, employers. And that will allow us to provide a more informed recommendation to the city council. Right now, we just, we have things that have been laid out for us that are possibilities. And our commitment will be in, has been laid out in the housing element that we'll continue to evaluate these, you know, through our program, evaluate possibilities. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, thank you. And I know it's very complicated. My, my kind of like hope is that from the council, we will be looking at these other measurements. Because in a years, we might just have a completely new demographics in specific districts. You know, and that's what I'm hoping that we can address. So, but thank you.
I just want to also clarify that the staff conversations we've had. The the housing element is eight years, but what we're proposing in this is that the, looking at those tenant protection measures is a top priority for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So I, I, I think that we've really heard the community, they, they really showed up in force at some of our workshops, that there's an urgency around this. So I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. No, I really appreciate that because especially, I think, we, we always ask to hear from the community. And when they speak, you know, it's always good to to move forward with something. So thank you.
Councilmember, if I could just pile on one more comment on that. I, I think that you're asking about the types of things. And I think looking at what we've done over the past couple few years is a good indication. And I think that I would say that there's, there's nothing that's off the table in terms of staff needing to analyze and study and report back like we always do with any sort of policy that we bring to the city council. But over the past several years, we had a source of income discrimination prohibition. We did mandatory mediation between landlord and tenants. We have a just cause for eviction ordinance. We have, we had a COVID-related eviction moratorium and a COVID-related rent cap. So I think those are the the sorts of things or other ideas that have come up that we want to look at those programs and see are there changes to those programs that we would suggest because now some time has gone by? Or are those programs okay and we want to add new programs to it? And I think what the housing elements trying to do is not lay out the details of specifically what those things would be and exactly how it would affect people like a policy or an ordinance change would. But instead say, these are the sorts of things that we want to be exploring during this period of time. And I agree with Alexis that when it comes to the rent, renter issues and tenant protections, that that's among the highest priorities in here. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much for the clarification and information.
Thank you. And I just have one last question. San Rafael, like the county and all the other jurisdictions are preparing housing elements. And my, it strikes me that the county has an entire department. You guys have been amazing. The three, four, I know there are other people behind the scenes working on this. So my question is, are there items that the county can take leadership on? That we can dovetail with, or we can ride their coattails, whatever analogy you want to use. Because they do have a huge department, especially around that education outreach. So could you speak to that?
Yeah, this may be one where where more than one of us would like to address that. I think we all have thoughts on this. But we've tried in our programs to identify those that really can be best achieved through intergovernmental coordination. And there is one explicit program that is all about intergovernmental coordination. And that is really where we would look to the county. I do think there's a lot the city can do, being the largest city in the county and the most urban city. We're the leader. So, you know, there, there is kind of, I think, a high expectation for San Rafael kind of as a role model among the cities. But certainly, you know, on education outreach, some of the fair housing related enforcement issues, testing and so forth. I think we would be working in partnership with the county or, yeah, having the county take the lead on some of those initiatives.
And follow-up question, does their housing element, I don't know if they've submitted theirs as well, does it also recognize those type of intergovernmental? I mean, it's one thing if we're recognizing it, but are they also recognizing that?
Yes.
Take a leadership, okay?
Yeah, it absolutely does. And so do most of the other elements of the cities in the county as well.
Wonderful, fantastic. Thank you. I'm sure there are other questions that might arise after public comment, so we will go to that portion. So right now, if you are in the chambers and would like to get public comment on the housing element discussion, please come on down. Come on down, yeah. You can, if you are you're, if you're interested, we'd love it if you'd introduce yourself and say where you live in San Rafael, but you're not required to do that.
I'm Judith Blumberg. I'm a resident of Glenwood, San Rafael. I'm also a leader in the Marin Organizing Committee, as well as the co-chair of the M O C Affordable Housing Team. And I'm submitting comments regarding the San Rafael draft housing element. I'm not going to read the whole thing because I only have two minutes. I wanted to commend the staff on their report and their analysis. It's not only comprehensive, but the analysis addresses in plain language the financial and housing needs of people who reside in this city. There were specific items of the report that stood out. San Rafael has a larger percentage of single-person households and a smaller percentage of married couple family households. Two, compared to Marin County as a whole, there were thirty-six percent of the households who are renters. San Rafael had fifty percent of households who rented in twenty nineteen. Between twenty thirteen and twenty twenty-one, the median income for a household with four people increased from a hundred and three thousand dollars to a hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. This was an inflation rate of forty-five percent. So therefore, households of four earning less than a hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred sixty, fifty dollars is considered low income. That's a total of forty-seven percent of San Rafael households. The number of people who live in overcrowded households here nearly doubled between twenty ten and twenty twenty. Going from three one point one percent to six percent. This is triple the incidence of the county as a whole. And citywide rents as well have all gone up. Rents in brand-new construction says the report for a one-bedroom unit now start at thirty-four hundred dollars. And I will stop because I will turn this in. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Judith. Yes, and do, as Barry had said, we are taking comments even after the submission to H C D. So, so please continue to email and send in letters. Anyone else in the chambers like to comment? Yep, come on down. And as I said, if you're interested, you can identify yourself and where you live, but you're not required to do so.
Alleviteri, I live in Gersel Park. I've lived in Marin for close to forty years. Housing is very important to me. I'm retired now, so rent increases are very affecting. If I understand the presentation that you've provided, the objective was to give a report to the state that satisfies their requirement that City of San Rafael is in fact producing a plan that addresses the needs of the community. I think that's, that's what we're trying to get to. What I'm thinking about when I'm listening to the report is how it helps with particular problems of rent increases. Now, I look at the my landlord and the formula they seem to be applying where it's five percent plus inflation is the allowed rent increase for the city of San Rafael, maybe the whole of Marin County. And if I project that over ten years, I, I, I won't be able to live here anymore because it'll exceed the fixed income that I live on. So that's, I, I'm not sure that is being addressed in your plan. When I remember attending the element meeting in twenty fifteen and the subsequent offense that happened after that. I seem to recall that one of the problems with getting housing in Marin was getting investment. For some reason, people don't want to invest in this county, and I don't understand why. So even today, you go down Fourth Street, you see a number of places that are ready for, excuse me, for development and lay fallow. So I don't know if the plan includes some incentive to attract investors to this area. And I'm running low on time, so I will end it there.
Thank you. We will follow up with answers to those questions. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Bob Pernoli. I'm a San Rafael resident. Tonight, I'm speaking for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. We applaud the basic thrust of the plan, which is a clear commitment to equity and social justice, rather than the usual focus on the minutia of zoning regulations. It's critical to promote and implement programs that accomplish the Reno production goals. But policies must ultimately be driven by values. The thorough and insightful needs analysis and the clear values-based goals and policies show that the city's planning not only for its share of the regional housing mandate, but for the community's needs. Overall, we think the content and writing of this element are excellent. However, we find that the draft plan fails to address one of the city's most urgent housing problems, gentrification in the Canal neighborhood. As you know, several years ago, the federal government designated the Canal neighborhood an opportunity zone. We think that as a direct result, investors purchased the apartment building at four hundred canal, radically increased the rent and served notice that they're about to begin major upgrades. Tenants are effectively being forced out. The draft housing element speaks to eviction protections and relocation assistance, but it's silent on price controls. The draft housing element should speak more directly to the need for rent stabilization in the Canal neighborhood. Also, likely as a result, or in response to the economic, the economic opportunity zone, the bowling alley at eighty-eight Vivian Way was redeveloped with seventy townhouses. The neighborhood is a highly desirable location. Investments at four hundred canal and eighty-eight Vivian are clear indications of gentrification that threatens the lower that threatens lower-income households in the area. While the Canal clearly has problems with crowding and economic disadvantage, it's also a vibrant neighborhood that should be protected for its own intrinsic value. We recommend that the pro, that program, that a program or programs be added to the housing element to facilitate the purchase of rental housing in the canal by qualified housing providers, as was recently done at several properties in Terre-Linda. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seeing anyone. We'll see if anyone virtually would like to comment on this item.
To comment on Zoom tonight, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple of hands.
Yeah, this is Johnson Reynolds. I live in the canal. I'm very concerned about gentrification coming to the canal. I support what Pernoli was talking about, Vivian Way, four hundred canal. It's a, it's, it's atrocious that the rents will increase there and put people out. We have the helpful assistance for people to relocate. But we need to move towards some kind of a rent stabilization ordinance, particularly for the canal. I agree with what Robert Pernoli from M E H C said. Otherwise, the whole analysis is very well done. Equity is very important. And as much as possible, having diverse income levels in different projects as much as possible. We need to do that to to share the different perspectives and experiences of different people of different income levels and different racial and other differences. We need to have that as well. But the focus for me is the canal right now. And we need to move to against gentrification and more towards rent stabilization. I affirm, I'm a member of M O C as well. And I support what Judy Blumberg said and support what Robert Pernoli said. So thank you.
Thank you.
There is one more hand.
Hello? I think you can hear me. My name is Gregory Andrew. I live in San Rafael Meadows. I have two comments and questions. The first comment is that the housing allocation should be modified to provide no more than the fifteen percent buffer that the city is required to provide, not the fifty-one percent buffer that is in the in the draft housing allocation, three times more than required. I recommend that you modify this by in part reducing density allocations at some sites and eliminating some other sites. And I ask this question, what is the rationale and justification for the housing allocation having a fifty-one percent buffer when only a fifteen percent is required? Second comment is that the housing element needs to articulate measures that will ensure the existing neighborhoods of San Rafael will be protected. This seems to be particularly related to density and adjacent building height. So my question is, what concrete measures will be implemented to protect existing single-family neighborhoods in the community? I will say that I was not impressed with chapter six policy or any discussion at all, or that anywhere in the housing element, is there any discussion about protecting the existing neighborhoods of San Rafael? And I know that the city likes to tout that it's, it's vibrant and wonderful neighborhood. So I want to hear how the housing element will protect those wonderful neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I see no further hands, but I'll give everyone a few seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back. We heard several questions and I'll, I'll frame the ones that I have and we'll see if we got them all. I think it would be helpful if you start out by talking about programs versus ordinances. Because I think housing elements and general plans is a different type of document than what the, what we often discuss up here. Often up here, we did talk about ordinances. So if you can kind of clarify, clarify why the level of detail of those ordinances are not what we're talking about tonight. That would be, if you could talk to that, the next one would be a question about permitted rent increases by the state. There was a gentleman that talked about that. And what does that look like over time? Are there incentives to invest in development for developers? Why is the housing buffer so large? What is the rationale? And finally, the role of single-family homes in the element and how they are incorporated into the element.
Sure, I'll begin. So the programs are intended to be activities that happen over the next eight years. They're really, it's kind of our to-do list for studies to be done or operational procedures to be followed. An ordinance is a specific part of the municipal code that regulates development and what can be built on a piece of property. There are some recommendations in the housing element for changes to ordinances. But I think the important point here is that there is no rezoning of property proposed as part of this relative to the general plan. So we went through that. relative to the general plan. So we went through that process when we did the general plan update. We did the amendment of the land use map and created the capacity for the housing that we're talking about. So we're not actually going in now and changing our ordinances. We're simply adopting a roadmap for the next eight years that lays out strategies to be employed by the city, in some cases to be just considered or studied. In other cases, the language is more committal about what we're going to do. So it's really kind of at a higher level. The buffer issue is, it's an excellent question. The 15% requirement is the minimum. So the state basically says, we need you to have at least a 15% buffer above and beyond your assignment. And the reason that we have a higher buffer is that we actually, most of that buffer, almost all of that buffer, in fact, is in the above moderate income in the market rate category, because we actually have a lot of projects in the development pipeline that are above moderate income. And if you add up the projects that are already either approved or that have been proposed, we have more above moderate housing planned than arena number already in year one and day one of our housing element. So really, what we need to do is, we're not going to discount the above moderate, because those units are already out there, and we know that they're coming or they're pending. So that there is sort of an inflated quality to the above moderate numbers, because there are so many projects that are in the pipeline. The percentages for the lower and the moderate are much more modest. And I think we recognize that we have a lot of opportunities for housing that may be low and moderate, but not every one of those sites is going to develop with low and moderate income housing. So it is in our best interest to have a surplus of properties and to have some extra sites. So we've done that. The role of single family, I think the relevant point there is that we have concentrated all of the housing opportunity sites in areas that are already zoned and planned for higher density uses, either commercial property where mixed-use housing is allowed, or higher-density residentially zoned property. There isn't anything in the housing element that's going back to to change single-family neighborhoods into multifamily neighborhoods or densify those areas other than what's required by state law. The other point I think is important to make is that this is one chapter of a 15-chapter general plan. And so it's easy to take it out of context, but there are entire chapters of the general plan focused on neighborhoods, focused on conservation, focused on sustainability, land use, and other issues that address some of those design concerns, the compatibility, the density issues, the scale transitions between higher density and lower density. Those are all addressed in other parts of the general plan, and nothing will proceed without considering the whole, without considering all of the pieces of the plan together. So I think that's just one of the challenges with doing this element separately from the other 14 elements of the plan, but it's all consistent and it all adds up to a whole. Thanks.
Thank you. And then, so the question around incentives for developers?
Yeah, I think Ally's going to answer the incentives question.
Thank you.
So there's a number of things that we've done in the past few years. Our city manager was talking about the work that the city council has been doing, and it includes providing opportunities to streamline the development review process. We spent quite a bit of time interviewing developers in the past three to five years, identifying the things that were pain points for these developers. We started changing the way we process applications in cases where we have a simple review process, a simple review. We've really tried to be more intentional about, you know, really just streamlining and reviewing and processing the applications as we as we are able to. And then we also looked at identifying ways where we could we have our fee structures, our development impact fee structures that have always been required, you know, when an applicant submits a building permit, and they're not always necessarily needed at that time. As an example, the traffic mitigation fee was required at the time building permit was submitted, and we started looking at an opportunity for really just requiring that fee at final, which is when we start to see the traffic impacts occur. So we've looked at different ways to encourage developers to develop within our community. Does that answer your question?
Well, it's a community question, but yes, yes, I think that's a great answer. Thank you. So I'll bring it back to the council for additional questions as well as comments, and I'll start with the Vice Mayor.
I think our job tonight is to, you know, look at this plan and say, is it ready to move forward to the state? Is it meeting the state requirements? Is it addressing what we're hearing from the state that needs to be done? And then we know that there's more feedback that's going to be provided and incorporated in. I really appreciate all the work that's been done, and the voice from the community has been invaluable and very important. I think we're hearing loud and clear the need to provide more affordable housing and whatever we can do as we go forward to support those who are providing that. Those types of homes and affordable and lower affordable and low-income homes to encourage those, incentivize those programs, and to get them through the permit and planning process as quickly as possible, I think is really important as part of this plan. And I look forward to having it move forward. I look forward to having the feedback from the state. So we know what we need to do, because it's sort of a guessing game right now, and we have a lot of work that has to be done. One other area, we spent, and within the plan, there's a lot of references and work around supportive ADUs and wanting to encourage ADUs, but we also know the ADUs do not meet our arena numbers. So that's still the
Some.
They contribute some. Okay, so not fully. I just want to make sure that we're balancing that, because we know that the ADUs that have come forward so far have not really added inventory from a housing perspective, from a low-income housing, which is what we had hoped to see more of. So I just want to make sure that as we're balancing the work to support ADUs, that we balance that to what we've actually already seen.
That's a good, do you want to provide further clarity on that? Because I think that's a really good point about the ADUs. And how they are manifesting in our arena numbers are.
Sure, sure. We're assuming 25 ADUs a year for the next eight years, which is a little bit higher than what we've been seeing, not a lot higher, because we've changed the rules. And we have some data on how, what rents are being charged for ADUs. So we're using that. It's regional data to determine how many will be low-income, how many will be very low, how many will be moderate, and how many will be above moderate. And we are able to to assign some of them into the lower-income categories based on, mostly on the square footage. The smaller junior ADUs tend to be less expensive, sometimes rent-free even to a family member, so we can count those toward our regional housing need.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great comments. Councilmember Bushy.
Comments on I, this exercise that we're involved in is high-level strategic planning. What our strategy is going to be for the next eight years and setting those guideposts to guide us as we embark on the next years, rather than looking at the specific details of ordinances as we often do, parsing through all of the words. So from a high-level planning perspective, I think we're absolutely on the right track. One little thread that I'm hearing in a couple of places that I'd like to kind of shine the light on a little bit is the need to leverage as much as possible outside resources, wherever they might be. For example, relying on the county to take leadership on things where they should be, the fair housing enforcement, for example, to fully incorporate them and rely on them and not duplicate the efforts that they're doing there. We can, I like the way the approach on homelessness of using our local housing policies to prevent homelessness, but not trying to recreate the Health and Human Services Agency, which the county funds to the tune of something like $250 million a year. So we want to leverage every single one of those dollars that we can possibly to to get benefits for the people experiencing homelessness in San Rafael. That's, so that's my strategic perspective of get money from anywhere else that you possibly can to make that work and to have that come through in the plan of that outreach to other sources is one of our first approaches. And then to step back for a minute, and also looking at the strategic level, trying to get those low and very low-income units is really tough. It requires incredible amounts of funding and planning and working. And just to give one example, that has taken us a decade and a half to get here, and it's just being built now. The La Cloma development that I talked about earlier, that development was approved in 2007, 15 years ago. It's not complete yet. It is not done yet. They had to come back and revise their inclusionary housing requirement to get to to pay funds into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which we then had an eye on where we wanted to put them, and that structure is now being built on Third Street. So it takes a lot of of opportunities in different areas, recognizing opportunities and persuasiveness and just for, you know, happenstance that we're able to put those things together. So I don't know how you put that in a high-level plan that we've got to be fast and opportunistic, but that's what it takes to bring those units actually online, not a lot of just talking. So anyway, I will stop talking and say, I will be happy to move to approve the plan when the time is right.
Thank you. Councilmember Yoren Sculatti, comments?
Thank you. Yeah, again, I really want to appreciate, this is a lot of work and, you know, a lot of community conversations. Really appreciate like the effort from the city, because it's extremely hard, and I know we have our heart in the right place. For me, I'm also ready to support the plan. I would love to see in the plan as a roadmap, a little bit more mentioning the fact that we are going to be working, you know, on certain parameters, like in 2023, 2024, reflected in the plan. Again, around gentrification and yes, because it's so hard to build new units, how can we keep people in their current units? But other than that, again, I'm very happy to support the plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Just to my comments are going to be more reflective in the process to date. And I think this was a word that Liz Darby used earlier, but that the process has been robust. I think that characterization is accurate, that there was an intentional selection of 13 committee members for the Housing Element Working Committee that reflected the different personas in our community. We want to make sure that those are important, in addition to all the other community members who are engaged. I agree that this document is to provide us guidance on what our priorities and aspirations are for the next eight years. Clearly, there are numbers and data to it. I'm glad that that is there to support and inform us as well. I am eager to have this go to the state so they can receive comments. I'm also reminding the community that we are still taking comments, so please continue to feed them toward us. And thank you, Barry and staff, for leading this robust engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent comments. I was so struck in the beginning of your presentation, there's one built unit for every 18 jobs, and I know that that was, I think, a San Rafael number, but it could be a Marin County, Bay Area, California. So the need is real, and I really appreciate all the work that staff has done, both internally as well as working with other agencies to recognize that and start to rectify that. And I share Councilmember Hills and my colleagues' appreciation of the task force. We know, or the working group, we know that we met, they met more often than they would probably have been told they would meet in the beginning. So hats off to them for the stamina, continuing to do that, because that's really important. I mean, that's that last link that we have with the community to get that input. We also appreciate the letters we have received, and you can still send in more letters, as we've said several times. The housing element's a roadmap. This is what we're hoping, and that was what I had written, and Barry, that was exactly what you had said. And once it's approved, then we can start to decide if there are areas, where there might be areas that we go deeper. The council has goals and objectives that we do on a two-year cycle, and we'll be doing them for 2023, 2024, and that's where we can start to look if there are areas that we want staff to expend time and resources. So it's one thing to sit on the dais and say, oh, we want this, but the reality is, it's a small team who actually does the work. And so we actually have more work to do among ourselves and with the community to figure out where are those goals and priorities and specifics that we would want around any program. So what has been presented, I approve as written. I don't think we need to add a word at this point. We'll wait to see what the state comes. Everybody has to keep their fingers crossed and toes, because we know in Southern California, many of the letters or many of the elements were being rejected, and that's not going to happen here, because you guys have done great work, and we've learned from where they got it returned. So so thank you. We look forward to this continuing conversation. This is a conversation that I think when Mary Beth and I started on the Planning Commission, I don't know, 15, 20 years ago, we were talking about it on the council, and now this council today is still talking about it. This has been a priority and a value for the city and for this council, and I can assure our community that won't change. It's really, how is it going to manifest and what type of policies going forward? So this is a great start, or a great continuation, I should say. And I know Councilmember Bushy had said that she would make a motion on this item.
I move that we approve submission of the HCD draft 2023-2031 San Rafael Housing Element to the California Department of Housing and Community Development for their initial review and comment.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurt.
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Sculatti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye. That motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Thank you all. The next item on our public hearing, for our public hearing, is Aldersley Retirement Community Project. And I am not sure who's presenting. Director Judice, you're presenting.
Mayor Kate, so the presentation for tonight will be done by Janie Allseth. Janie is one of our consultants. She's been assisting with some of our larger projects. And then we also have Leslie Mendez. She's our planning manager. She'll be supporting her. So as they slowly start to get situated, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. So Aldersley happens to be one of the credit sites that has been identified in the housing element. It's identified as a site that will accommodate 14 additional units. It's also considered a housing development project, which means that the city has to look at it in that lens. Our Housing Accountability Act by the state says that we have to have a really good reason for denying such a project. So, and Janie will lay out that information. So I believe, unless, they may need some assistance, so I'm going to go ahead and hop on a roll.
Okay. Welcome, Jamie. Welcome, Leslie. There we go.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is the Aldersley Retirement Community Project. The project site is located at 326 and 308 Mission Avenue. Mission Avenue runs along the south side of the project site, and the project property goes up north uphill to the Bell Avenue frontage as well. As you can see with, on this map, which provides zoning of the project and of the adjacent area, the site is located the site is located just north of the downtown precise plan area. So it's not within the precise plan area, but just north of the precise plan. There are three components of the project application as outlined in the staff reports. There is a zoning amendment to revise the approved plan development approved back in the early 2000s to a new plan development district and new development standards. There is a master use permit to be amended to allow for the mix of proposed uses, which are essentially the same as what was approved back in the early 2000s. And there is an environmental design review permit for the phased project phases one through three for the actual construction of the development plan. This is an aerial view of the existing conditions of the site. And I'm not going to go into detail on the existing site conditions because I believe that will be covered in the applicant's presentation as far as what buildings will remain. And there are buildings on the site currently that are proposed to be demolished to make room for the new development. This is a snapshot of what is proposed for the project site. The most significant development would be a new independent living building proposed along Mission Avenue. And also the portion of the the western portion of the campus would be developed into additional independent living units. And there are other improvements that would be made to provide for modernization of the project site of the Aldersley community and for improving internal access as well as maintaining access to the property. Excuse me. So in all, the proposed project that's before you this evening would add 14 additional independent living units to the Aldersley campus. It would increase the the independent living units, which are counted as dwelling units from 55 to 69 units. There would be no change in the assisted living or memory care beds. They would remain at 35 beds and there would be no change in the skilled nursing beds that are currently on the site. So again, the uses of the of the Aldersley campus are essentially the same as what has been existing, but there would be additional independent living units added as a result of the proposed project. This project was subject to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, and a final EIR was prepared. And there are CEQA findings that are required to be made and they're included in the resolution included in your packet. As attachment one, there were extensive opportunities for public comment, including public hearings before the Planning Commission. Since the draft EIR's 45-day public review, there have been no significant changes made to the EIR. There were revisions made to clarify information, but there were no changes to the conclusions reached in the EIR regarding the significance of environmental effects. The EIR did identify one significant and avoidable effect related to historic resources. And that is addressed in the response to comments and the draft EIR, which together comprised the the final EIR. All of the mitigation measures are included in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is attached as Exhibit A to the first resolution attachment one. There's one item that I would like to go over briefly. It has to do with a minor change to the proposed site plan. And this this is a snapshot essentially explaining the the minor change. This change has come about as a result of the applicant reaching an agreement with the property owner at 304 Mission Avenue. So 304 Mission Avenue is the is the property on the corner of Union and Mission and it's directly adjacent to the Aldersley campus. So there is a a small section of Aldersley property that has been used by the property at 304 Mission Avenue. And an agreement was reached to allow the continued use of that property. It's a minor change in that parking area. Staff has reviewed it and we find that this change with this change, the site plan would still meet all of the the code requirements. However, it would mean that instead of adding eight parking spaces, six parking spaces would be added just because there there is that a little bit of space area that could not be utilized as parking. Again, we've looked at it. It looks as if in staff's opinion, it would be beneficial not only for the property owner at 304 Mission, but for all of the adjacent neighbors and that it would require overall less construction, less construction noise, less dust and would maintain essentially the same profile with the the walls and retaining walls that exist today. So staff recommends that as part of the City Council's action that the this minor change in the site plan be approved. The applicant can answer more specific questions if you have any about this change. And just one final comment, and that is that speaking of of construction, I believe the majority of the comments submitted by neighbors had to do with concerns about construction. And I just wanted to briefly mention that as part of the conditions of approval that are included in your Attachment Three Resolution as well as mitigation measures, as well as what's in the municipal code, staff and the applicant has spent a great deal of time trying to make sure that the construction phase changes, construction phase impacts would be minimized to the maximum extent so that the so that these impacts can be mitigated completely as much as possible. There is a preliminary construction staging plan that was provided by the applicant that looked at the staging of construction materials and making sure that access to the site would be appropriate and available for the different phases of the project. The actual phasing plan was changed from four changes, four phases to three phases and specific areas of the site plan were identified as being available for construction access and staging. In addition, there is a condition of approval. It's condition number 74 that requires that a construct, the more final construction management plan be submitted to the city prior to the issuance of a building or grading permit. So this is typically a requirement of most projects. It requires Building Department, Department of Public Works and Planning, and it must address such issues as staging areas, traffic control plan for the public streets and site cleanup, phasing of construction, construction noise abatement and those types of issues that that are typically addressed. That concludes the staff comments on this. At this time, we do recommend that you adopt the attached resolutions for the certification of the final EIR and for adoption of the zoning amendment. Sorry, that should be an ordinance and a draft resolution for recommending approval of the use permit and the environmental and design review permit with revisions to the site plan as prevented, as presented this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions now or after the stat, the applicant's presentation.
Thank you. Why don't we hear from the applicant and then if there are any questions? Come on down and you can introduce yourself. Welcome. And maybe put the microphone up yet so we can hear you. There we go. Thank you.
It's usually not necessary for a five, seven person.
There we go. Thank you.
Anyway, thank you so much for seeing us tonight. Good evening, Mayor Kate, council members, and thank you, Janie. So my name is Peter Shakow and I serve as the president of the Board of Aldersley. And we are, of course, here tonight to also ask for approval of our plan. Aldersley is a nonprofit senior housing community. We have about 130 residents today. And about between the ages of 72 to 100. And at one point, oh, am I, am I driving the the presentation?
I can advance them if you like.
Well, that would be good. I can probably manage to. Let's see. You got it, Janie? I can, I can talk because this is sort of general, the picture doesn't really matter that much for what I have to say here. But we are a full-service retirement community and that means we are providing free meals, we have activities, we have a memory care unit, we have assisted living. And so it is, it's a multi-level community care, community. And about seven years ago, we experienced that many of the people that came, families that came to check out Aldersley to find out because they had heard about Aldersley and that's where they thought they wanted to live would visit and they would start out by saying, can you show me your two-bedroom apartments? And we said, sorry, we don't have any. And they'd get back on one-on-one and go somewhere else. And so we realized that today, the families and the kids of the people who wanted to move in needed different things than what the people were asking for 30 years ago, 40 years ago, 100 years ago. Better amenities, size of units and, you know, amenities from the accessibility. And so we were basically in a situation where we were kind of bleeding. And that's not a good sustainable plan to have. So we engaged at that time in planning and thinking about what do we have to do? That commenced the 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 planning, going through the whole vision, mission and and so on. And let's see if my little computer will accommodate me. Yes, sorry about that. And so we 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 engaged in this process that we have now gone through with the city, the planning, design and all the faces. And but sustainability is clearly a very important part of of our need because we are at a point now where if we couldn't do the changes that we are asking your approval for, we simply couldn't see a long-term future. Maybe sort of we would bleed out and we don't want to do that. We just celebrated our 100th anniversary two nights ago and we'd like to be able to set a path for us to at least begin to get another 100 years of of services in the in the community. And we think Aldersley clearly is a little different than almost any other unit. For one, it's the only Danish community anywhere in the near here. And we're also the oldest community in the area. And I like to say we are not old because we're not good because we are old. We are, we are old because we're good. And and what do, and so what do we mean when we talk about us being Danish? Why is that? Well, first of all, I have the accent to back it up. And but it's also the the reason that people tell us that they are interested in it is because of the not only the environment, I mean, the the campus and everything else, but the whole sense when you're there is we it's a low-key, it's a friendly, we like to use the word huger, which means that we care about and we use some of the things that we bring with us from the Danish culture of taking well care of of our elderly. So I want to add that I have a whole team of experts in case I can't answer questions pretty much from architects to construction to the 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 greenery, it has a better word, sorry. And they will be here to to also answer. Now, if we can go to the, just quickly, let me show you the the timeline. One of the things that we has, and I think Janie mentioned this also, that we have spent a lot of time on getting to where we are now, engaging with the community. And we have had, obviously, had a number of challenges as we have gone through this process. COVID was one oddball that came in that really gave us some some problems. However, we do appreciate through the pre-application process that gave us a lot of information that allowed us to make changes as we went through putting our paperwork together. The environmental review again helped us identify issues that allowed us again to make changes in response to our neighbors. And I have to mention one thing that we are also proud of. Aldersley is sort of functioning as kind of a local meeting place. We've worked very closely with the Montecito Area Resident Association. That is Mary Beth Bush's district. And we started working with them when we when we did the early stakeholder analysis. And they have been with us from the concept all the way through vision meetings and everything, every step along the the way. And they have given us information that allowed us because they had the voice of the neighbors that we were able to incorporate. And they all promised they would show up tonight and say, we want this. So where are you? Now, so and I think one example of what happened is there were some neighbors apparently on part of the Bell that had not seen or had not been involved with with Mara, the Montecito Area Resident Association. And we kind of felt like they they were caught by surprise at the, you know, when the city sent out the 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 notices. And we spent almost half a year first sitting down, having a meeting, listening to them very, very carefully. And we spent months figuring out how can we, how can we mitigate? How can we change things around to try to address their their concerns? And we found that they had legitimate concerns. And by moving some of the the order of the faces that we are doing, we found out a way to avoid having the massive construction, big trucks and cranes on Bell, which clearly was a legitimate concern, and found out a way by shifting a little bit to actually access, access everything from from Mission Street. So we are proud that we were able to work out something that seemed to satisfy the Bell Avenue neighbors. So with that, Sue, I'm going to pass on here. And so there are three of us that are going to be here today with Sue and we have another senior person who joined us also now. Leslie. Leslie Maddow.
Thank you, Sue. Hi, thank you for having us. My name is Sue Im. I'm an architect with the Park and Seesman. And we're going to go through some of the key features that's part of this development and we'll try to do this pretty quickly. So as part of the existing site plan, if you guys can see the kind of the faint yellow line around some of the buildings, we've targeted renovating or really repositioning the buildings that are least useful today, which and when we say least useful, they're beyond repair to bring into current code or accessibility and least desirable by the residents. These buildings were built over the last 100 years and many of them were designed as studios without any kitchens support. So we, it's not really appealing to the current market. It does not support the independence that the residents really crave beyond what their current needs are. So the the project aims to replace the buildings that are, again, that has kind of spent its lifetime to bring into current the current market. It's moving a little slow. So you can see the phase one, two and three that are proposed as part of the master plan. And what we have aimed to do is keep the main buildings that are heart of the campus and the characters intact and all the green spaces, the major green spaces that are surrounding it and really building around the edges to build up the density and take advantage of those buildings. But again, I think it was really important to us to keep the character of the campus as is because it is the green. It is that on the garden community and that's something that we did not want to lose. And while we're doing that, we also wanted to find some clarity for the front entry and wayfinding and just improving the overall accessibility. And as you can see, um, accessibility. And as you can see on this site plan, I mean, in this section, there's a fifty-foot difference between elevation from Mission Avenue to Bell Avenue. What that means is all these buildings are sitting at different elevation levels and they're interconnected by stairs and ramps that are actually not, um, current accessibility, like that they're not complying with current accessibility. And while many of the residents really enjoy the built-in exercise nature of the facility, it doesn't really work very well when the resident starts to rely on canes and wheelchairs and walkers. And this also impacts the staff quite a bit. They're daily pushing carts and trash up and down the ramps to actually, you know, haul it. And, you know, we want to make sure it provides a better service. So as part of the first phase, the yellow building in the center, we have allocated different elevations to connect at appropriate levels that we can provide vertical circulation for those who need it while maintaining that garden aspects and, um, of the campus. And then what's unique about this is that we were actually able to provide outdoor space at every level with direct access that's beyond the balcony. So that's, you know, really emphasizing the uniqueness of the campus. And while we're doing that, um, we mentioned they were designed as studios that were combined over time. So as part of our new proposal, we're adding fourteen units, but, but while doing that, also increasing the unit sizes so that they're better serving the current community. But also at the same time, we wanted to note that it's targeting the one bedrooms and one bedroom plus dens and not so much to the two bedrooms and the larger units because we did want to really maintain the vision and the mission of the community to serve the greater community and not just those few who can afford it. Um, for the architectural feature, we work with the neighbors and also with the design review board to maintain the existing character of the main, um, campus. Um, so some of the features were large expansive windows, the material colors and um, forms, but also the eve line and things like that. And so with the new building, what we wanted to make sure is that it maintained those aspects while celebrating some of the Danish architectural aspects of it. So this is a Mission Avenue view um, for going from east to west. So you can see our building set into the context on the right. And we did this also to kind of see how the scale of the building, um, fared against the building that's across the street. And here's the, um, run, uh, rendering of the front entry. And then part of this, um, piece was to also level the entry area. We're keeping the inlet still, um, exactly the same, but repaving it so that, you know, the, um, the slope is more reasonable. And then we have a, a proper front entry and everyone can recognize where that is and also provide proper visitor parking and deliveries and things like that. So, thank you for having us. And I'm gonna introduce Leslie Molda really quickly if she's ready for us.
Thank you, Sue.
Hi, just to add, it was really interesting to hear your housing element discussion. I think that feeds directly into what this project is partially about. Um, the housing element indicates that there's five thousand seniors who are over the age of seventy-five in your community now. That number's growing. So to have a project like Aldersley, which is a really rich resource for everybody to, um, to lean on as people age is wonderful in the heart of the community. Uh, I think we learned during COVID that people who live in an isolated way, really that isolation is a killer and that people need socialization, a very warm and, um, encouraged uh, huge gay community like Aldersley really strengthens the socialization and community aspect that seniors can look forward to. Um, and, uh, in addition to that, provides great care. So we see this as being a great asset to the overall community as a whole.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you, Leslie. Let's see. So, uh, our executive director, Shannon Brown, unfortunately also caught COVID. And she is so sorry that she couldn't be here tonight. So I'm not gonna pretend to be her, but I know that she wanted to, um, uh, really express that the, our residents, uh, really the heart of the, of the community. Everything we do is around what the, the residents need. And you have heard probably several times that, that we are a community that was established by Danish immigrants in, in nineteen twenty-one. And, um, the plan, uh, that we have come up with is a thoughtful plan that is built around the residents and new residents that are coming in, how to serve them. The, uh, and of course, although that wasn't our i- initial, uh, incentive or, or uh, reason for doing what we are doing, we are happy that we are able to contribute to the, some part, small part of the solution to the housing crisis in, in, uh, in San Rafael. Um, so, um, with, with that, uh, and sorry, Sharon, if you're listening, I should also, by the way, say that, uh, we had a number of people assembled in the Hendrix Hall. Uh, I think you have also, mostly you have seen that. I believe we have one left. Uh, but there may be some of them that have gone back to their apartments are, are tuning in from their, from their apartment units. But, uh, let me just finish by saying that, uh, we clearly are, are here and, and we're making these changes. Uh, and I know that there have been concerns about, you know, the, the historic, uh, nature or sites and everything else. And, uh, Shannon would also have said, we look different today than a hundred years ago when we had a bunch of cottages on a hill. Uh, so there have been an evolution over all these years, but the red thread has been through the whole, uh, process to, um, to keep whatever we can of, of this, uh, cozy, uh, comfortable place that we call Aldersley. And of course, it isn't just, um, the buildings and the landscape, it is also the people that are actually taking care of our elders that, uh, that count. So, um, we are happy that, uh, we have gotten, uh, as far as we have now, uh, approved by the design committee and the planning commission. And we are indeed, unlike, uh, the previous presentation, we are actually here to ask for your, for your vote. And I think what a better way of, uh, starting the next century, than to get a yes vote from you. So that's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Sue. Thank you, Leslie. And Jamie.
Jamie and Leslie. I, I'll see if my colleagues have questions, but I just have one overriding one. Often, uh, projects, once they, they go to DRB and go to planning commission, do not need to come to the San Rafael City Council. Could you just speak to why we have the pleasure of hearing about this project this evening?
Yes, Mayor Kate, in, uh, this case, one of the actions that you're being asked uh, to take tonight is, uh, adoption of an ordinance which requires the, the city council take that action. And typically when there is one, uh, aspect of the application or of the proposal that requires council action, other uh, applications are elevated to that same level.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for that clarification. I'll see if there are additional questions. Vice Mayor? Uh, Councilmember Health?
No questions.
Councilmember Bushy?
No questions.
Councilmember Yurenz Guladi?
Um, I, I just have one question.
Yeah.
So, uh, I guess my question is, uh, what happens with the residents while, while you're building these different faces?
Shannon, Shannon Brown did mention that, uh, and you have seen some, uh, letters, uh, probably also about questions about what happens to the people who are affected by the change. And I can share with you that, uh, we had nine families, uh, most of them single in the apartments, uh, when we started this process, who would be affected because we have taken off the market, so to speak, uh, three buildings in order to build a new one. And, uh, we stopped selling or renting, uh, you know, giving those units to new people coming in, which of course is a financial burden by having them standing empty, but we did not want to invite people in and then tell them within a year or eighteen months that they had to move. So the people who are, uh, affected by it, we have been working very, very hard. We've had meetings, first in groups and then one-on-one. Uh, we have two people, two, uh, people, uh, who have been relocated within the, uh, current community. Two other residents who, in, for natural reasons, have migrated into, uh, higher level care, the assisted living. So we now have five more. Uh, we have to resolve it before April. And we are working on many different, uh, solutions. There is a certain, a certain, uh, predictable, not precisely, but, uh, you know, evolution of people's care needs, uh, increasing. And so by April, uh, it either will have disappeared or we will have come up with other solutions. And we are looking at all solutions. We are talking with some other of our neighbor communities. If need be, um, they could actually go there. We will find solutions. When people call Aldersley, uh, their home, we guarantee that we will take care of them for the rest of their lives. And so we will.
Thank you, Peter. As there were no questions from the council, uh, now is the time to get public comment. Um, and I can tell from the clapping that there are many folks that were supportive. So if one person wants to speak and everyone can just say, I agree with them, that's fine too. Or if you want to come down, that's fine. Um, but I will open up to public comment for those in the room right now. Or you can just have a general raising of your hand if you support the project. There we go. We see some thumbs up. You know what? That is a really efficient way. I saw about a dozen hands just go up. Thank you. Yeah. Yes, go ahead.
Hello. Um, my name is Susan and my mother has lived at Aldersley for a little over three years now. Uh, she started out in an independent, uh, care unit. And then when her health had a few issues, she moved on to the extended care. And she is now living, uh, had a third transition into memory care. And I have to say, I have felt so supported by the Aldersley team uh, during those transitions. Um, they have been extremely helpful. The continuum of care has been outstanding. Um, every aspect of her care was taken into account, um, not just her physical needs with, you know, making sure she has three meals a day and her vital signs, but all of her mental, um, mental needs were really addressed as well. They provide music activities and they take the time to talk to her, which really makes her feel like it's her home. And so, um, I did do extensive research before I placed my mom there. I toured every place in Marin County. I never found the same kind of professional passion that it was in the Worth ethic of Aldersley. And so because of their approach, um, I feel like it's such a well-thought-out, uh, place that I feel like I really support their endeavors in going forward. And I think it would be really good, not just for them, but for San Rafael and Marin as a whole. So thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Thank you for sharing that.
Uh, Bob Pendoley, I'm gonna speak for a minute for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative and then for myself. Um, uh, MECC, um, tends to support, uh, senior projects, particularly when they include life care and because it's such a desperate need. I mean, as you heard, we have, uh, at least five thousand residents in this community, um, over seventy-five. And ultimately, most of those folks, including myself, are gonna need some kind of sort of life care. Now, the other reason that MECC, uh, likes this type of project is because whenever a person moves in, it frees up another home in the community for a younger household. So it's good. You win twice. Um, now speaking for myself and my wife Janet, a couple of years ago, we decided it was time for us to look for an alternative. Uh, we wanted someplace where we could spend the rest of our lives that'd have life care. And the first place we looked at was Aldersley. Really beautiful. We liked it a lot. And we knew it had a great reputation for care. The units were just too small. I mean, they were really basically designed for si- singles. They just weren't gonna work for, real well for us as a couple, not to mention the dog. But, um, but, um, when we heard about the remodels, uh, we got on the list, uh, we've gone to, um, the various presentations and we decided to put a couple, a couple of dollars down to put ourselves on the waiting, waiting list. Um, we think this is gonna be an excellent opportunity. Um, so, um, as a representative of the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative, um, we'd certainly recommend this project. And as a representative of as a San Rafael residents, uh, we also think you ought to approve it. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you for all that MECC does. Anyone else in the chambers? We feel your enthusiastic support, so.
I'll address that.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening, council members. Uh, Mayor Kate, my name is John Simon. That's my mom there in the blue coat. She is one of the unlucky five that has no idea where she's gonna be living in April. What the heck? How could you not? From the get-go, this has been a five-year plan. How could you not address the housing needs? I mean, they're not all gonna die in the next two years. And I hope mom's got a lot more than that. I realize there's a trajectory where people move up to the next level of care. But you can't count on that. I mean, healthcare is better. People are eating healthier. They're gonna be sticking around. How did you not address that in the first year or two of this project? It's ridiculous. If I was doing this project, that's what I would do. Um, it's kind of ironic that you're talking about fair housing and how's San Rafael? And Aldersley is getting ready to give the boot to some of its residents, kicking them out of San Rafael. How is that the right thing to do? I recognize that this project is probably inevitable. And yes, there need to be code updates. Aldersley is old and it's out of code and in some ways unsafe. And that needs to be fixed. But the very first priority is to take care of the residents that are there now that aren't leaving, that don't want to leave, that paid into this over a hundred thousand dollars to call Aldersley home and pay an exorbitant amount of rent each month. They've earned the right to live there. And I think that Aldersley should figure out a way to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments and your email. I know that you had emailed us as well. Yes, thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone? Is there anyone virtually?
If you'd like to provide public comment, you can use the raise hand feature, or if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand as well. I do see one hand raised. We're ready for you.
Hi, this is C.C. Rayside. I live, uh, just above Aldersley on Bell and, uh, uh, Ridge Avenue. And there's already a lot of traffic there. And in fact, there's a dangerous intersection, as you're probably aware, it's kind of a blind intersection where people are already, um, you know, almost hitting each other at the top of that intersection. And, um, I'm imagining there's gonna be additional traffic at that intersection. And in addition to that, you mentioned, I was already concerned that there are only eight additional, uh, parking spots when you're adding fourteen more units. And now you're cutting that down to six. So there's less than a half a parking spot for each additional person. I saw that you were looking at adding valet, a valet, but you're still gonna need to park those cars somewhere. And there's, you've mentioned rideshare. I don't know what that means. There's still, you know, parking is a huge consideration. It's already, people are parking all the way up and down Bell, already an issue. And actually, they're gonna be limiting the number of parking already because of evacuation zones. So parking is gonna be a huge issue and I don't see that resolved and nor do I see the residents of the area should have to take that on. That should be the responsibility of Aldersley. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commenters? Okay.
Yeah, hey, am I live?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, hey, this is, uh, Steven Simon. I'm the brother of the amazing gentleman you just saw. I just wanted to, uh, I'm unfortunately wasn't be able to be there tonight. I'm in Los Angeles. But I, I, as I watched the proceedings, I'm a dog, that there's been zero mention of the people who actually live there and no mention of, of equitable relo- relocation of where they can be. This is nuts. You're talking about care, like it's beautifully packaged demonstration of what could be. But the whole presentation completely ignores the people who are already there. And I am gobsmacked at, at, at this presentation that you cannot, uh, yeah, parking is important. Uh, building noise is important, but the people who live there and who have lived there for so long is so important. And I implore you to take that into consideration and to find a And I implore you to take that into consideration and to find a way to not displace people from Aldersley altogether. And yeah, just take that in consideration. I understand progress and yay rah rah progress, but there are people who live there and who have made Aldersley their home. And this project is, there is zero equitable plan to let them live at their home for what they signed up for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I see no other hands raised and I'll give everyone a couple moments. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. So I heard two questions. One is a concern about the displacement of Mrs. Simon. So maybe the applicant could speak to that. And then just a little bit more on the parking. So that'd probably be Jamie. So Peter, do you want to speak to that? I mean, I know there's probably HIPAA or things involved as well, but if you could speak to that, because I know that I can tell the family is very concerned about Mrs. Simon.
I, I would like to at least share some information. I understand completely the anguish of all of a sudden being told that your unit that you moved into and now call home is going to disappear. But I, I do want to say that it's not like we just booted them out of Aldersley. We have a commitment, number one, to take care of all the costs. If we find whatever either on campus or at one of our neighboring community, which is probably the last community, I mean, the last option. We will take care of the moving costs. We have professional company engaged that will actually take every piece, every picture down and in whatever the temporary living quarters will be set it up exactly like it was. Where the lady whom I love, she, I know Mary, Mary Jo well. And, and I understand the family is very concerned about it. I understand that not knowing what's going to happen by, by April. But we will also move, if, if, if Mary Jo has to move to another place temporarily, if we can't find another place, then we will also move her back when we have availability. And one thing that we do know, for example, one of the things we have done, working with the families that were potentially, were involved in one way or the other to find a solution. We didn't, we stopped selling the units. When they become available, all the families, individual and their families, sons, daughters, they get told, here is a new apartment that opens up. Do any of you want that? And if none of them will, we put it on the market. If any of them want to take that and says, yeah, I could live here for a while. We have worked out a process for how the priority process is. So I just want to clarify, it isn't just like boot out. We made a promise and we're not keeping, we're really trying very, very hard. Again, I'm so sorry that that's the feeling that you have. The heart is still with Aldersley and all our residents.
Thank you, Peter. The question about parking, Jamie or Leslie?
Yeah. Yes, so before addressing parking specifically, taking a step back, the, there was a traffic study, a traffic and parking study prepared. The, the number of additional trips, traffic trips that would be generated by the proposed addition of the 14 independent living units and the additional staff, which is a 2.4, I believe, full-time equivalent would be very minimal and negligible in terms of the impact on the, the surrounding neighborhood. Currently, the access to the Aldersley campus is from Mission Avenue. Bell Avenue is used for deliveries and for, for providing access for, for people to be transported to the skilled nursing. And that's all within existing facilities that are there on this, on the property already. So the existing loading area is already there. As far as parking affecting the, the neighborhood and the concerns raised by the, by the neighbors, the, they're, they are adding six spaces to increasing the onsite parking. It was acknowledged back in the early 2000s when the existing plan development was approved that, that parking in the area was challenging. And so while the initial proposal was to add eight additional spaces, so that's eight spaces beyond what is there now. It's down to six. And according to our traffic and parking study, in terms of the amount of additional parking that would be generated by the project, it would be five spaces. So they're meeting their, their parking demand based on, on the analysis that has been conducted.
Thank you. No, that's really helpful. Thank you so much. I'll bring it back to the council for additional questions or comments and I'll start with the vice mayor.
Appreciate everyone's time tonight to be here, willingness to engage the community. I know it's been a long project, but I've heard from many that there's been a continued effort to reach out to the community, listen and to make changes. So really appreciate that. And keeping with this project over the long, long haul that it's been and envisioning the future. I think the project looks, the campus is beautiful. And I think these additional units will make a, you know, important step for the next 100 years. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yiran Skolati?
Yes, thank you for the presentation. I had a really good friend living there 18, 20 years ago. I, I love Aldersley. I'm, I wish you the best of luck with the construction, fully support the project. I'm really hoping that you can find a solution for the five tenants that you have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Thank you. Any project that comes here with the DRBs, the design review boards and the planning commission unanimous support is something that would take a lot to have me not support. However, I don't need to go there for this one because it's a, it's a, it's a well-thought-out and well-presented plan that continues on. And the wonderful things that Aldersley brings to our community, including one of its beloved residents who originally brought me to the planning commission, so the, our former mayor is there. However, we are, this is, this is not the end. This is really just the beginning because as you mentioned, this is my district and I know that Mission Street and I know what my, my, my people care about. And there's going to be the construction, the phased construction for this, on this project is going to have a lot of impacts on the neighbors and, and the traveling public that goes up and down Mission and the high school. So, so we need a, a, a reinvigorated public outreach effort to make sure that we're staying in touch with the, the people in the neighborhood, letting them know when the big events are coming, particularly the closing Mission Street. That will need to be carefully thought through and very carefully brought out to the public and, and work your way, and work your way through that. And under the rubric of ongoing things will also be the transition housing for the residents. I will hold you to your commitment that you will take care of those people.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I would like to echo Councilmember Bushy's comments that this, the outcomes that, that this promises are ones that we all want. The path to get there still seems challenging with respect to construction, with respect to impact, especially for folks that are already residents. As Councilmember Bushy said, I, we hold you accountable for making certain that while there are uncertainties right now, that you do everything that you can to make sure that there is an appropriate transition. I project myself into the position of the, of folks who are impacted and I would want that commitment followed through on. Thank you.
Thank you. My colleagues made excellent comments, so I will not add any additional ones. I will entertain, there are three separate actions. And I think they need to be read in, so.
So they make a motion and then ask our city clerk to read them?
I can. You, I could do that with the ordinance. I can also do that with the resolution. It's.
Okay, so what, she can do that with the ordinance. Why don't you go ahead and read the motion of the first one?
Okay, so I'll make a motion. This is the resolution certifying the final environmental impact report, adopting a statement of overriding considerations and adopting a mitigation monitoring and reporting program pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for the Aldersley Plan Development Amendment Project.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurt.
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Next motion, and you can actually read the wave, the, it says it right there on the piece of paper.
Okay.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Wave further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
And I request that the clerk go ahead and read the title of the ordinance. Do you want that before or after the second?
After the second, please.
Second, seconded by Councilmember Bushy.
Thank you. An ordinance of the City of Centerfell, City Council, approving a planned or development rezoning from Plan Development District PD 1775 to Plan Development District PD and Development Plan, including 14 net new independent living units for the 2.9 acre senior retirement community site located at 308 and 326 Mission Avenue.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurt.
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Final one?
I'll read it. I moved that we adopt a resolution approving the master use permit amendment to U P 20 dash 022 and environmental and design review permit E D 20 dash 051 for the Aldersley Retirement Community at 308 and 326 Mission Avenue. A P N 01405431 and 32.
And may I ask, is this where we need to have the minor change in the site plan? Is that under this one?
Right about that.
Yes, it is.
And, and including the minor change in the site plan as discussed earlier.
Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurt.
Aye.
Councilmember Yiran Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you. And we still have a full agenda, so yes, so if you don't want to stay for the remaining items, we will give you a moment to clear the chambers. Thank you. Yes. We will take five minutes. Next item this evening is a Rotary Manor culvert replacement. And I see Director Miller is here.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and councilmembers for having us tonight. April Miller, Director of Public Works. We're here tonight to talk about Rotary Manor, which is one of our aging infrastructure projects. I just wanted to point out that as part of our capital improvement program that was approved earlier this year, we actually have a storm drain master plan that we're doing as part of that. So we're going to kick that off early in the year. And just wanted to let you know that because we are going to look at all of our aging infrastructure in our, in our priorities. But this project would come up regardless of, of that study. So I just wanted to let you know that that's also on our radar. So I'm going to introduce Theo Sanchez. He's the associate at Public Works.
Welcome, Theo.
Thank you. Mayor Kate and councilmembers, thank you very much for the opportunity to give this presentation. I'll go ahead and share my screen and get that set up. All right, so the, the presentation that we're going to be going over is specifically to talk about the California Environmental Quality Act mitigated negative, negative declaration that was completed for this project. And to go over the public comments and any that might be pending at the end of this presentation. So this is just a quick overview of the presentation, just going to go over the summary of the project, go over the potentially significant impacts that the document identified and then any comments that we had received. And then we'll have our hearing for any additional public comments and then vote on the resolution items to adopt that document and to authorize the staff to proceed with final design. So just to describe the, with the location, the Rotary Manor Senior Community is located close to the intersection of Fifth Avenue and H Street. The blue lines on this are the storm drainage system. So you can see that through that private property is a culvert that goes underneath it. Just to point out that this branch of the storm drain system is connected to our San Rafael Creek that outlets into the canal. So it's one of the higher reaches of this. The green line is the property line. So again, pointing out the culvert that goes underneath. A portion of this culvert is a eight by six foot reinforced concrete box culvert. And then this portion that the project is concerning is a arch corrugated metal pipe, which is this picture right here. And so the project is to replace this corrugated metal pipe with a concrete box culvert in kind with what is upstream. You might be able to see a little bit further in this picture is the other portion, which is the reinforced concrete box culvert. And in addition to replacing that, we will also be restoring the property that is above the culvert that has been affected by some drainage issues. This is a picture from inside the culvert looking downstream. So normally we might be able to get a categorical exemption to replace a storm drain in kind, but because of the fact that there's a natural creek, there is some environmental impacts that needed to be looked at. So we hired a environmental consultant to complete an initial study and determined that a mitigated negative declaration needed to be completed for this project. The public review period started October 26th of this year and was completed in November 30th. And we noticed the, the public review period in the Marin I J and also sent mailers to all the owners and occupants within a 300-foot radius. So the list at the top shows the potentially significant impacts that were identified. All potential impacts that were identified. Uh, all potential impacts that were identified can be reduced to less than significant. And uh, but the way by, the way that would be accomplished is through the mitigation measures. This is not an exhaustive list of what's in the document, but some of the measures include pre-construction biological survey, just to make sure that there aren't any uh, specific uh, fauna or flora fauna that uh, it could be endangered or um, impacted. And environmental awareness training provided to the contractor and anyone else who's going to be involved with the uh, construction effort and procedures to be followed if cultural resources are found during construction. In terms of comments received, we did receive one comment letter from the uh, State Fish and Wildlife. Uh, their comments primarily focused on uh, recommendation for us to obtain regulatory permits, which we're already in the process of doing. And also suggested that potential impacts to certain special status plants, and specifically the foothill yellow-legged frog are more than unlikely. So what I mean by that is that the uh, mitigated, the initial study already went over all the different plants and animals that could potentially be affected. It identified uh, some to be uh, to have a unlikely uh, chance of being impacted by the project. Fish and Wildlife uh, countered and thought, no, that there is a potential, even though the, the these uh, this frog and certain plants have not seen, been seen in this area, there's a potential that they could exist, that frog could have gone upstream, there could have been plants carried uh, through the creek, potentially there could be something in that area. So uh, we are already in the process of uh, submitting for our regulatory permits, one of which is with fish and wildlife. So we will continue uh, to work with them during this uh, permit application process to address any additional comments they may have. These are just the comments they have on the initial study. So in the next steps that are remaining are to finalize the design, to finish the process of obtaining the regulatory permits, and we're hoping that construction could potentially start sometime in spring of next year. And that concludes my presentation. I have, uh, we also have uh, Jeff Riley, who is from our environmental consultant W R A available to answer any questions that are more detailed on the um, initial study.
Thank you. Thank you, Theo. See if there are additional questions from the council. Uh, Councilmember Hill?
Uh, yeah, just a question. I found that the table was pretty exhaustive when it comes to, you know, the flora fauna, but also the cultural artifacts could be potentially found. Is this a pretty standard inventory for San Rafael? Or is this uh, above me on? Just kind of curious, just because I don't get to see these types of lists very often.
Yeah, Jeff, could you please uh, speak to that?
Yes. Good evening. Hi, I'm Jeff Riley with W R A. I'm a senior environmental planner. Um, yeah, we, as a part of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, we had a c- a standard cultural resources study prepared that involves uh, at first a record search, um, and then the actual going onsite, um, and then preparing the report. And typically these reports, even if they don't find anything, still recommend mitigation measures if something's found. Um, so it's pretty standard. The, the biological list that's in, in, in the M N D, initial study M N D, um, that is based on our onsite fieldwork as well as looking at C D F W's database of potential occurrences in the area. They're ver- very standard. Sometimes that list gets appended to the document. In this case, it made it into the biological chapter. Um, and as you may have seen, it, it tells you how the unlikelihood of those particularly species that were raised by C D F W being two, four, or eight miles away from the site in a highly urbanized area. Um, but as Mr. Sanchez alluded to, we're still going through the permit process with the Regional Water Quality Control Board and California Department of Fish and Wildlife, which will give them, and they're not even acknowledges that they might still um, require some of those recommendations that Mr. Sanchez just described.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, I don't have any either. So we'll open up the public comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers like to provide public comment? Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone who'd like to call in and provide comment?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Don't see any hands. Just give it a few seconds longer. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back for comments by the council members and then a motion. Uh, Vice Mayor, any comments?
Looking forward to having this move forward and get it completed. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Great first step in the process. Let's keep it going.
Councilmember Yarenz Galati?
Uh, yeah, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to this. If you see a yellow-legged frog, let me know. I would love to see them too.
Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, looking forward to support this.
Thank you. I don't have any comments either, but thank you. I know this has been an ongoing project and um, I live pretty close by to the site and I know that the residents there are really looking forward to having this completed so they can put their above ground garden back. So, so thank you. Uh, with that, I would entertain a motion on this item.
All right. I move that we adopt a resolution adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration I S M N D and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Rotary Manor Culvert Replacement Project Authorization to staff to proceed with final design and procurement of regulatory environmental permits.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurt.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarenz Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. The next item in our public hearing is the Marin sanitary service rates for twenty twenty-three. I see Cory Bitoff has joined us. We're getting everybody tonight.
Let's see here. Okay. Oops. Uh, same. She. Where is it?
It's being a little slow thing.
Oh, it's right in front of me. Thank you.
This will take a second.
Okay. Okay, thanks. There we go.
Wonderful. Welcome.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this is our annual rate review public hearing and a little update on our illegal dumping program as well. So I'll just give a little bit of an update on the rate review and then an update on the legal dumping program, then we can open up the public hearing. And I'll let you know that on Zoom, we have Garth Schultz and Jim Howison from R three Consulting, our third-party rate reviewer. And then uh, Patty Garberino, Joe Garberino and their staff are on as well, if you have any questions. So every year when we bring this forward, I like to remind people and we all think about our household refuse and the carts that we have, but you know, this is also serving uh, businesses and multifamily dwellings. So people have dumpsters as well, and they have multiple times pickup as well. Um, so background, we're allowed to regulate refuse service, which we do. We work with other Marin jurisdictions that are using Marin sanitary service as well. That's Larkspur, Ross, San and Somal, Fairfax, Las Cletus Valley Sanitary District in the county of Marin. And we try to leverage our um, abilities to work together and, and keep costs down as well. And then the rate review is based on a methodology that really streamlined things a few years ago to try to be more based on C P I as much as possible as well. Um, and then, as you know, uh, and as Patty Garberino likes to say, it's more about resource recovery now. It's less about your garbage. It's more about what are we getting out of the garbage? And would it be diverting to be um, recycled in some way? And then there's a lot that Marin sanitary service does. It's related to state laws and diversion goals and recycling goals as well. So um, you have the full report in front of you, including all the tables. Primary impacts had to do with inflation and the effects of COVID. Um, and seven point one percent rate increase was a little less than overall C P I for the year. Um, it is based partly on the C P I for waste sewer and water, um, which was a lot higher this year than in previous years, and then the effects of COVID, which really comes down to the fact that a lot of businesses have reduced their refuse service, um, not only to cut costs, but because they often have a lot less refuse as well. Um, and as a reminder, last year's rate adjustment was at two point three nine percent. And one of the main reasons COVID didn't affect it so much last year was it was the paycheck um, um, protection program and Marin sanitary carried that um, revenue loss for several months until they got confirmation that that could be forgiven. So what it effectively means is for um, a residential customer with a thirty-two gallon cart, which is the most common cart service for refuse. It's about three dollars and thirty-five cents extra per month. Um, changes to commercial rates are all over the board. So we pick the most common commercial rate to give you a cent, and the common commercial rate is one, three yard dumpster picked up once a week. And that's about forty-one dollars per month extra. And of course, people can reduce their refuse service by recycling more, recycling is free. Um, low income rates are available for residential customers based on the um, P G and E care program. And then just to see where we sit in terms of all the other Marin jurisdictions, that gray line at the top is the average is about fifty-two eighty-six for residential, the common residential. And at Centerfell sits at fifty nineteen. Do note that most of these other rates, though, are twenty twenty-two rates, and we're comparing our twenty twenty-three to it because we don't have all the rates in for twenty twenty-three yet for all these other jurisdictions. So now transition to our legal dumping program, which I uh, love to give updates on. We're having a lot of fun with this with our interdepartmental team um, and really digging into a data-based approach. Um, we have, as you may remember, a five-year program to reduce illegal dumping fifty percent by twenty twenty-five. So we just kind of shocked ourselves into, well, what, what would that look like and how, how would we get there? And we broke it down into what is really going on here. The majority of it is what we call the casual dumper, or the idea that people put things out on the street because everybody else does in the neighborhood, mostly multifamily, don't have access to vehicles to be able to transport, maybe it's too expensive to take it to the dump. Lots of reasons that are sort of obstacles or barriers to people doing the right thing. Um, we focus on the three main areas, access, education, and enforcement education, meaning outreach, letting people know, actually, we don't just put it on the street. Um, we tried to build our baseline data set, and a lot of this year was really going back and refining the data and making sure that people were tracking things in the same way across departments as well. We've done a lot of engagement, um, and we're really focusing on the idea that um, right now, single-family residents can have twice a year bulky items picked up curbside, but we don't have a similar component for multifamily, and that's the majority of where people need to get rid of stuff. So in last year, we ramped up some enforcement, police department installed cameras in a few locations, saw some good results there. Um, we had a huge increase in our free bulky item days at Pickleweed Park. Really big increase in that. And what we did last year was we were mailing these mailers and we, as you may remember, we were only doing these four to six times of the year. And we said, well, what if we did them the same Saturday every month? Would that penetrate people's knowledge? And we did some surveys just last month and found that about fifty percent of residents in the county knew about this event now. And we think that's a, one of the big reasons. We don't have data to prove it yet, but that's one of the big reasons, um, we think that that happened. Um, so we spent a lot of time doing outreach. You can see on the image on the right, the unwanted stuff. We mailed that to all multifamily tenants in Centerfell. It had a little magnet for your fridge and a Q R code, and um, we developed a website with all that information. There's a lot of free resources out there, but people need to know that they're there. And we mailed in multiple languages as well. We did a pilot with the Mattress Recycling Council to see, could we do an on-call pickup pilot at multifamily dwellings? Mixed results on that one. We're still trying to dig into that. Um, but we did see the hotspot campaign showed promise. So we spent a lot of time and resources on this one hotspot at Charlotte and Sonoma in the canal. Twenty-nine reports of illegal dumping in twenty twenty-one. Um, neighboring, we offered uh, the Crime Prevention Through Environment Design Mini Grant to one of the apartment complexes. They put up cameras, um, word got around, we marketed the events, we got posters up in the multifamily apartment complexes in the area. And the next year, this year, we had about ten reports, so it dropped significantly. And that's a lot of time and energy for hotspots, but we don't have that many hotspots. It just takes us time to do it over, uh, over the years. So the plan for twenty twenty-three is really to continue the bulky item days. They're very successful. They have, right now, they're the cheapest option that we have, that we found. Um, continue the surveillance cameras installations and enforcement, um, and, and work on those hotspot campaigns. I'll tell you, the enforcement mainly is somebody gets a driver, uh, a license plate number, the police go out, find them, make them pick it up and take it to the dump. That's the majority of the enforcement, but that's that's a significant, when you actually, somebody actually finds you is pretty significant. Um, mini grants, uh, continued to mini grants. We only had ten, I think six of them are in process right now. And then continue the data gathering and mapping and really working with our folks on the street to make sure that they're collecting accurate data so we can really go from um, correlation to causation with some of the things that we're doing, hoping that next year we can bring back a portfolio of options for you to review. So that's the summary of the illegal dumping program and the rate review, and uh, we can open up for questions in public hearing if you'd like.
Thank you. Um, I will start with the Vice Mayor, and then I'll go to the subcommittees. I know you two talked about this as well. So Vice Mayor, any questions?
Um, for the hotspot campaign as well as for the uh, bulky item days, is that currently in the canal still? Is that, it hasn't expanded to other areas with the um, multifamily units?
So we've done a variety of hotspot campaigns, and um, we're actually working on Lincoln Avenue right now too, because that's another primary hotspot. We focused them in on the areas that had the biggest density of dots on the map, um, which tends to be more canal downtown, um, a little bit in Crystal Park and Bret Hart. Um, and uh, so the bulky item days are geared toward that area. That's where we marketed directly to anybody in a multifamily dwelling unit can bring stuff there. Uh, but when we costed it out to actually expand it to the whole city, it's, it would double the cost at this point. So right now, just because we're in pilot mode and data gathering mode, it makes more sense to kind of focus in on those areas that are really the dense spots. Um, that said, one of the police um, hotspot areas was actually around Ida Street, um, where we were getting complaints about dumping, and it was pretty regular behind the old yard birds there, and that is kind of really cleaned up, uh, since they put in some cameras and.
Right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know there was a subcommittee that worked on this. So thank you, Councilmember Bushy and Yarenz Galati. I don't know if you have additional questions, but do you? Go ahead.
Uh, no questions on, just on, well, maybe, um, Cory, could you just, um, in, in summary, um, um, walk everyone through the, the, the major components on, of the, of the, of the seven point, um, one five percent sure, increase.
Sure.
So previously you used to have a little table that laid it all.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
And I just.
Left it all in the report. So um, the collection operations was the majority, and that's two point seven seven percent. That is what's based on the C P I increase, and that's most of the operations that includes salaries and benefits, which, as you know, is one of the biggest ones, right? We've got three trucks going out to residences and businesses all the time now. Um, and then the rate revenue reconciliation is the next highest one, and that's really a projection based on what we were, they were expecting last year and the shortfall to that compared to this year. And then there's agency fees as well, right, regarding compliance, uh, vehicle impact fee and things like that. There's a small profit allowance in there, which was a point three three percent. We did have um, an um, uh, benefit to the rate of about point four four percent for recycling processing. That's because Marin sanitary um, is really good at keeping things separated and good clean to be able to sell them, and not all haulers are able to do that. Um, the illegal dumping program contributes uh, about point four two percent. And then there's some other diminished costs.
Very good. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Yarenz Galati?
No questions, no questions.
Councilmember Hill?
Actually, you've mentioned it in your comments just now, uh, Cory, which is the recyclable materials processing. Uh, there, there's a net dollar change, a negative net dollar change, actually a recovery, um, to reduce the cost from three hundred five uh, and change down to a hundred eighty-nine point four thousand. Um, do we expect that you're, via the value of those recyclable materials to actually have that increase, your, that decrease in cost for recyclables because of that recovery to continue, or is this just kind of a one-off that there was, that the value of recyclables have to just happen over this one-year period? I may ask, um, Marin sanitary or Garth to address that in terms of the law, like what it was compared to last year. But um, it's very volatile, and one of the things we did with the rate setting methodology was try to constrain that volatility and also to make sure that anytime there was profit on recycling revenues that it did benefit the rate. But Garth, did you want to add anything or Patty?
Uh, I'm, I'm happy to, if, if it can be heard. Am I heard okay?
Yeah, you sound great. Go ahead.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, honorable mayor, councilmembers, staff in the public. I'm Garth Schultz with our three consulting group. Thank you for the question. Um, so I know M S S may also have a similar answer to me, but um, there has been a near-term improvement in the recyclables commodities markets since the downturn in those markets that happened with the Chinese national sword policy and starting in twenty seventeen. That happened with the Chinese national sword policy and starting in twenty seventeen. I wouldn't place any bets on continued improvement in that marketplace because it did prove to be so volatile. In that twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen span of time. It's a blessing to have some of it now and to have that be to the benefit of the rate pair. But long-term sustained gains in that marketplace really can't be counted on. And more likely what we'll see in the next five to ten years is some continued variability with benefits accruing to the rate pair in some years. And in other years, depression in those marketplaces for which both MSS and the rate pair will share. In the risks and then also, you know, sometimes rewards. So they may have more to share on that, but I hope that answers your question, council member.
Yeah. So maybe if I can reflect what I'm understanding is that URV or we could see this be volatile and we're trying to mitigate the impact to the rate pair as much as we can.
Year over year, it will be volatile and it will, yes, there's, there's a shared system for risks and rewards with the rate pair between the rate pair and the company.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep. Do you want to add Patty? Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for hearing our item. I just want you to know I'm joined here by Justin Wilcox, our general manager, Jason Raleigh, our CFO. And Ruben Hernandez, who aids us very well with all things mandate and legislation. I'd like to turn it over to Jason to, that was a wonderful answer that Garth gave, but and very succinct. Did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I would say that the volatility is definitely there. We've seen the markets, the prices for the material even fluctuate throughout the year. The first part of the year was probably a little higher than the end of this year here. They've been relatively stable throughout most of the year. But from last year to this year, they definitely increased. And so as I look to the future, I would say they're, they're going to be at least for the short term, a little more stable. But could see a decrease as some of the, the foreign markets. May not need all the material that they're looking for at this time.
I might also add for the benefit.
We Patty, we can't hear you. We could hear you before. I can't hear you right now. Kind of little sound like you're underwater. Try again. I think it's better. Go ahead. Try ahead.
Okay. Does that sound better?
Better. That does sound better. Go ahead.
We could address issues and updates on thirteen eighty-three. Our investigation into electric trucks or other net zero, energy efficient vehicles. We're going almost beyond electric into what we may look at or implement in the way of hydrogen. We settled our teaser contract. I'm really happy to say on the very last day and it looked at adequately. And everyone's driving around with smiles and waving hands. And all are on both sides of the table, very happy and satisfied. We had a wonderful customer appreciation day in September to with several hundred people coming down for tours and compost. And we've got some facility upgrades and a seventy-fifth birthday to celebrate the company next year. So given the hour, I will elaborate tonight. Love to have you all come down for a tour, especially to see the new tiger bag sorter. For the food waste and energy program and the optical sort that will go in just after the first of the year, we hope. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had two questions before we get public comment. So Cory, you kind of alluded to this. You talked about the big increase in the bulky item pickup, but are we seeing a result of less items on the street or is it too soon to tell?
We are seeing less items on the street. What it is hard to, you know, that's long-term data. And so it's, it's hard to show the causation, but we did see reduction.
Okay. And I know that it will help with tying that together as we go forward. And then the last question, SB thirteen eighty-three, which I think keeps all of us up at night, is the cost to, to implement that? Is that in this cost or is that will be in the review next year? Are we starting to see the cost? If you could just speak to that because that's an unfunded state mandate.
Yeah, there's definitely costs in the rate Marin sanitary does. Does implement some of the programs and it does end up on the rate. There will be costs to the city as well that we're still trying to figure out what that's going to be. We're doing a GIS analysis that Zero Waste Marine now is going to be doing for us and for all the other jurisdictions to understand. What kind of procurement could we actually do here to see if, if we can kind of push back on car recycle? In terms of having to buy so much compost and mulch every year.
And yeah, it's both the mechanics of it, but it's also the unfunded mandates that come down from the state. I think the more that we can understand what we're being asked, that we can go back and talk to our state representatives and connect those dots for them. Okay, I think we have enough answered questions right now. Let's see if anyone from the public like to comment on this item. Anyone in the chambers? Not seen anyone rushing down. Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this item?
I see no hands raised. Just giving a reminder that you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom and I'll give everyone a couple moments. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close a public comment and bring it back to the council for additional comments and ultimately a motion. Additional comments, Vice Mayor.
Nope, we just keep moving forward. So thank you Cory for the update and to MSS for the progress, the work working, working with us. And happy to move it forward.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Bushy?
I just want to shine a light on the illegal dumping program. That's been something that we've started and has a significant impact, I think, on our, the way our community feels. And it's something that we need to keep pushing forward. So I'm very pleased to see that program being funded and to continue to do that. And very happy with the Marin sanitary rates and the simplified program that we put in place some time ago.
Thank you. Councilmember Yuren Skolati?
Yes, I echo Councilmember Bushy with the lighting, like especially lighting into the, the illegal dumping. Especially Cory, I remember two years ago, there were like a lot of conversations and there is a big issue. What can we do? I really appreciate all the work that you have put together, working with Marin sanitary. I think they are like amazing partners. And, and I like the fact that it's five years, so we can see where the data is going. But yeah, and I guess if people want to save money, reduce, recycle and compost. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, just continued appreciation for partnership with MSS and the whole franchise framework that we work within. Just summarizing, I mean, this is, as I get deeper into this, every time we, we, we look at this, I learned something more. You know, as the state comes down with thirteen eighty-three and that it's unfunded, how do we navigate that? In our community, fifty percent of our community are, are renters. A lot of folks live in multifamily. There are different personas here. I'm just appreciating the complexity of how do we create operability there? How do we create equity? You know, the rates are reflective of that complexity. So anyway, thanks for continuing to keep us educated on this. And making certain that we're being really thoughtful about, you know, what do we do with all of our solid ways? How do we address recovery? I mean, just some of the information that we get every time is just makes it wider and deeper. So appreciate the thoughtfulness.
No, thank you. And I will build on what Councilmember Hill was saying. It is complex. We all think of, we take things out to our compost bin like, oh, that's it. Or if you have something that's not recyclable, you just put it in your trash can and you don't really think anything about it. But the reality is, is all the different segments have different rates, which makes it really, really complicated. And that's just part of it. And I love what you had said quoting Patty. And so Patty, I'll quote you in front of you, which is you're, you're looking, you're managing resources, right? It's not just looking at garbage or refuse and it's a really a whole kind of mind and mode shift that I have seen taking place with Marin sanitary. Or educating us. You probably had the mode shift and you're, you're educating the rest of us. And it's, we always wish that rates could stay static or even go down. But the reality is we are asking MSS to do more and more every single year. The illegal dumping program, I concur with Mary Beth Bushy, that this is a great program. It's going to continue to be needed. The hotspots is a great way. If folks aren't part of a hotspot, they can always report online. There is a report feature on our website. So just want to remind people of that. But, but kudos to Marin sanitary service, everything from the electric vehicles that you just talked about, the AV SP thirteen thirteen eighty-three. And all the other things that we're trying to do to make ourselves more sustainable because we only have one planet. So we got to use the resources we have wisely and this is a big part of it. So thank you for your partnership in that. And Cory, as always, thank you for navigating all the complexity and to the ad hoc team for working with Cory on this. So with that, I think we're to entertaining a motion on this item. What about one of the?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution approving maximum, sorry, I can't see. Approving maximum rates collected by Marin sanitary service for refuse and recyclable material collection. And disposal services to be effective January first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second? Move to second and roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedan Skolati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you so much. And last but not least, we have stamina because we had candy during the break. The last item is the downtown business improvement district business assessment annual renewal.
And Mayor Kate, I'll start us off as they get their PowerPoint together and stuff. This is Micah Hinkle is our new economic development director. And Micah is on day six. But he also was a City of San Rafael employee in the community development department over sixteen years ago. And then, then has spent the ensuing sixteen years doing progressively more responsible and impressive things in economic development. So we're glad that Micah's back with us in San Rafael and I'll turn it over to him to kick us off.
Great. Thank you, Jim. I really appreciate the warm welcome and really returning back to really a place where it all started for me. You know, my professional foundation is based in San Rafael. So it is really somewhat surreal to return here and then get to work on projects I've worked on before a little bit. But just a different vibe and feel for it. And I'm really excited to be here, especially about the opportunity and the world of economic development. And that's really where I've specialized in. And this had some of the projects out there, maybe the best buyer, the auto dealerships. That's where I cut my teeth on it, at least for city planning. But returning back to San Rafael to see where, what the next page is, and that's really exciting for me. So. But for, before you sign is really the annual bid assessment and renewal. And this is really an important tool. When we talk about the leverage to assets or the importance of working with the community. You know, on the basis of, of the bid, it's, it's a voter initiated self-tax. So the businesses thought it's so important to support the downtown, they got together and said, we're going to tax ourselves to support. Marketing events and physical improvements. So this is the tool that, that works with governments and its authority actually comes from the state, the state streets and highway code along with our municipal code. And this bid's actually been here for a long time. It was established in nineteen seventy-nine and expanded just recently, two thousand thirteen. So but if you recall, you, you actually, you know, we're going through the, the process to do this, which is put out the notice of intention to levy the tax. That was done in November. So this is actually the hearing that's yet to be opened, but that gives an opportunity for any of the rate pairs to come in and say, we either support it or we don't. But then from that process, then you can actually levy the tax or take the other options that are called out. But I actually want to also introduce Victoria Lim, the senior analyst for economic development. So this is your economic development team. So and yes, small and mighty indeed. And the, the amount of work that's really been coming and I really want to, my hat's off to Victoria for really taking this since departure of our former director. But she's done a really great job, just kind of moving things forward, the various programs and projects. So as I said, very pleased to walk in the door and actually be able to work with somebody so closely and say, this is where we're at, this is what we're doing. Same goes with the rest of the, the director team and Jim. So this is really some of the factor of coming back to San Rafael was the strength of the staff and the community and its council. So, so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Victoria for the finishing of the presentation for some staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Hinkle. Good evening, council members. Good evening and thank you for having us this evening to present. The next slide, I'm sure you're very familiar with this. This is an annual exercise that we go through to make sure that our BID has the funding. To do the great work that they do for our downtown. The pink area shows the premium BID locations. It's approximately from East Street to Lincoln between fifth and third. And then the blue area shows our standard bid rates in the table following that you'll see. This table has been in place since the two thousand fourteen ordinance that was adopted. So it's the same rates that have been in place. And you'll see there's a difference between the rates for the standard areas and the premium areas. I'd like to spend most of this evening's time with you on the BID's accomplishments. We have in council chambers, our amazing director, Sarah Tippel, as well as our dedicated president Jed Green. Who have worked tirelessly for San Rafael's downtown. The, this page highlights some of the key projects that the BID has been working on. And there are about five categories. The first thing that Director Tippel did when she arrived was show her website skills and just completely revamping the BID website. And just by way of background, I've been getting to know the BID by attending their once a month board meetings. It's an amazing team of dedicated community members of the business who show up prepared, ready to engage. Discuss ideas and work tirelessly behind the scenes to put together some amazing things for our downtown. A lot, thanks to our Director Tippel's leadership, the website, as you will see, shows all always updated events. And since mid this year, in the interest of partnering with the Chamber of Commerce, Director Tippel now sits at the Chamber of Commerce office. Which is a great partnership step forward. The BID has also participated in several beautification initiatives for our downtown. Our amazing trash cans that we have in place now, as well as our street reprogram that was approved by the council in October. The partnerships, this is really impressive to try to drive foot traffic downtown, working with the California Film Institute. To put together creative ticket stub incentives, to incentivize participants at the Mill Valley Festival to go and visit our downtown stores, our restaurants. Partnership with the Embassy Suites to get guests at that hotel to learn about what's going on in our downtown, to drive foot traffic that way through a QR code. So our BID is really high-tech. They know how to leverage technology, thanks to Director Tippel and President Green. And they've also put together a smart train art tour map that with additional funds, they can launch hopefully next year. And they're also supporting our downtown San Rafael Arts District to obtain funding from the California Arts Council. Send that they also work closely with our San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, not only being co-located inside their office, but they're constantly in dialogue. And supporting us, as I mentioned, with our street reprogram. They were a key part of our focus group task force that reviewed the initial drafts. Social media and marketing, this, a lot of our board members are very savvy in terms of social media, as well as our Director Tippel. And so that's been a great leap forward in terms of their social media efforts and marketing. And as you all know, throughout this past year, there have been some, as we come out of COVID, especially compared to last year, there have been some amazing events put together. Dining under the lights has continued. Dia de los Mertos still continues, the altar displays made madness, which. And actually the hops and vine strolls are two of the profitable events that the BID puts on, which is something they're very proud of. The West End Block Party was new this year, trick or treat on Fourth Street, Clean and Green Day. Winter Wonderland on Shop Small Saturday, which was recently, and BID Night at the Pacifics. I apologize, these are not in chronological order. But I just wanted to flag that, as you saw in the staff memo, this amazing list of events has been put together despite. A shortfall in revenue that they received. And so this amazing board includes, as I mentioned, President Jed Green. Vice President Dawson from Mike Spikes, social media chair, Erica Baucher from Pleasures of the Heart. Secretary Toby Lessin from Bodywise Massage. And our board members at large include Elizabeth Sutton from Artworks Downtown, Morgan Schoffler from Youth and Arts. Jeff Brusatti from TNB Sports, Terrence Thornton, San Rafael Martial Arts. And Bishlam Amy Bullock from Salon B. The committee members continue to be our experienced members, Jaime Ortiz from Bank of Marin. Ryan Spencer from Libation Taproom, Meg Riley from Marine Society of Artists. This group of people works tirelessly for our downtown and have. This group of people works tirelessly for our downtown and have done amazing things. Again, as I mentioned this year with, despite their challenges. And they've got a lot of creative ideas for moving forward in twenty twenty-three. Whatever challenge gets thrown at them, whether financial or COVID or anything else, I'm confident that they will be able to do their best work for our downtown center fell. And I'll hand over back to Director Hinkle.
So I get to do the closeout. So in essence, we still need to actually hold the public hearing. So that's the option for tonight, to basically have the public hearing and then the council options, depending on what, what comments were said and what, what direction you'd like to go. So with that, that completes staff's presentation. We're here for any questions.
Thank you. Fantastic presentation. And we'll be sure to hear from Sarah and or Jed shortly. In interim, any questions right now, Vice Mayor?
Just have a question around what the addition of AC Marriott, is that going to be part? Does that fall into his, I can't remember how you referred to it, whether it was the, the different levels premium? Are they beyond premium?
I think the question is where are they located on the map? I think they're, if you, I think they're in the premium zone.
I think it's premium, but I want Uber premium.
I think regardless of location, premium or non, it's really a flat fee. So in essence, it's not like a big ticket of dollars. But the bigger thing is, as we know, the, the TOT and visitor's stay and then the partnerships with the city and also the bid and the chamber. So there's a lot of other leverage opportunities in there outside of really what the, what the single fee would.
Right. I was thinking about that with Embassy Suites, as you talked about Embassy Suites as well.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Hi, how are you?
Good.
Jed Green, I'm a resident of Glenwood. I also have a business on Fourth Street and I am the president of the Business Improvement District. Yeah. So that's my understanding as well, that I don't think the fee is going to be that significant, but it's really more of the opportunities they have to bring businesses downtown as well as other people downtown.
Thank you. Don't go far in case we have other questions. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I think just, obviously we're, the recommendation is to hold the rates as they are. Just to explore a little bit, was there any request for reduction? Obviously that would, I would say, impact available budget to do the, you know, already dollars are being stretched. And then obviously there's the other direction of a suggestion of increase that we're holding. I mean, can you, can you share a little bit on, on how we arrived at just holding flat?
Yeah. So we have not heard any requests for decrease, which is good. But, but there have been some discussions about a potential increase. At this point in time, I don't know if we felt it was appropriate as businesses are still struggling downtown to increase it. But, but it may be something we consider in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yoren Scalati.
No questions, just comments later. Okay.
Councilmember Bushy? I don't have any questions either. So we will receive public comment. You can be the first if you want to have public comment on this item. You get two minutes or?
Yeah, so I will say it was a little bit of a struggle from the business assessments coming down. That's probably most reflective of sort of the darkest days of COVID. So although our budget for next year does reflect those same lower rates, I'm guessing they're probably going to go up and then they'll probably go up the future years as well. But, you know, we really don't have concrete data to make that assessment right now. We're hopeful. We believe so. We see more businesses downtown, so we think so, but we're not sure.
Fantastic. Thank you. Anyone else want to provide public comment on this item? Director Tippel? No, I'm not going to put you on the spot. Oh, you're good. Okay. I did put you on the spot. Yeah, come on down.
I have no trouble with the rates. My question is, it sounds like on the weekends, the city grants free parking for anyone who wants to shop in the city. And I'm wondering if something could be done with the smart train to have a reduction in fees, maybe make that free as well. So people could travel not only to San Rafael, but any of the downtown areas in Marin County to encourage people to come here and go home, you know, shop, eat, whatever the hell they want to do and then get the hell out of here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Good question. Anyone else? Not seen anyone else? Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this item?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. I don't see any hands, but I'll give it a few more seconds. So there's no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back. And I can't speak to the, I can't remember the parking. I think it is free on the weekend, so I will turn that to you in a moment. But I can tell you from my role on the smart board, Smart does offer free parking. The issue is Smart does not have any smart specific parking lot since they were fell. So that is offered, but not in San Rafael because they don't have a parking lot here. But in terms of, I think it's the structures are different from the streets. So if you can clarify the parking on the weekends.
Yes, thank you. And thanks for raising the question because it's something we try to spread the word about of the free three hours on the lots and garages that the city owns. To encourage people, there's always space in those, in those lots and garages, particularly the garages. And you're able to use them during the holiday season for free for those three hours.
I think the holiday season has started, right?
It has, yes.
Okay, let's hear some comments. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Totally support the recommendation. All the work that has happened and with the coming back after, you know, where are we at right now with COVID? And continuing the events, continuing the relationship with the businesses, I think this is really important. And I look forward to seeing what else can be done. As the economy picks up and as we see more businesses coming into downtown area, I imagine the, the idea will become more active, which would be great. And I'd love to see, you know, as you go forward, what would be on your future list? Of what would you see as, and as the members of the BID see as, as important to address and prioritize going forward? So I think that would be really helpful to think about, like, if, if, is it an issue of funding or participation? Or is it just an issue of more partnerships of what else could be done to help improve the downtown area?
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Yoren Scalati, who is also on the Economic Development Subcommittee with me.
Yes, thank you so much for the, for the annual assessment. I just wanted to really recognize, you know, our, you know, Victoria, thank you so much for your work. The bid, I know as a former member of the downtown improvement district, I know how hard it is to have a business and then having to work on, on this. And I'm just so impressed, you know, with, with Sarah, with, with the team, the enthusiasm, but also the creativity and how you do the social media. I have attended many of the events this year and there's always like the community response. I think it's amazing. So really keep up the good work. I mean, you have like a big fun here and just let us know how, how, how else we can support you. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I think we're all big fans of, of, of the bid. And I'm particularly pleased to see the, a close relationship with the chamber. There was a time when we needed to move to that. And I'm really happy to see that that is working out well. And I shared the, the vice mayor's interest in what is the future going to be? And how do we start building for that and getting ready for, we need more funding to, to take it, take it to the next level. So congratulations on what you've done so far and I'm looking forward to even more.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, I'm largely going to repeat a lot of the comments, but you know, the Business Improvement District has, I mean, there are so many very visible events that the community has benefited from, May Madness, and some that are not so visible. I mean, it was mentioned earlier around the, the arts district being potentially receiving funding from the state legislature. And I would actually just want to call out that Craig Vermae, who's not even part of economic development, was the one who really helped to organize and create an event where Senator Ben Allen and Assembly Member Tasher Bornor Horvath came as part of the delegation. And you know, the, the verbal feedback was so, they were so impressed with our, with our arts district. You know, these things are not as visible, but will have profound impact potentially on, on where we go. And yes, I would love to continue to work together. And I'll say a comment that I said earlier in my question, which was really that every dollar that the BID is able to, to use is stretched so far. And that really only happens because of the energy and passion from all the folks that participate, the board and all the businesses that participate. So hopefully we can find more dollars. But yes, I would love to, to challenge and see what else we can do. It takes a lot of different folks, economic development and all the departments in the city, Business Improvement District, Chamber of Commerce. It's a lot of different folks that need to lean in. So looking forward to continuing that tradition going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll echo the thanks. I remember, what was it? Earlier this summer and it was Dine Under the Lights, or maybe it was a Friday Block Party. And I'm there picking up my burrito at Tabor in Mexico, such good burritos. And there's Sarah wrestling one of the things in the place, one of the barriers. And, and really, so when we talk about hands-on, that, you know, you are hands-on and really your, your investment of time and energy and commitment to downtown has really paid off. And so yes, you have the mad social media skills and you were showing up. So thank you. We're still coming out. I think we're hopefully saying we're out of COVID now, but it really was working with the individual businesses down there who have sometimes had different ideas of what you were doing and what they wanted. And you really stepped up time and time again. And to Jed and your team, as Micah was saying, it's one of those kind of thankless tasks, but it's so needed. I mean, for us, the BID, both the events that you put on, but also it's a relationship, right? It's the kind of bigger business structure that we're creating and we really need the BID for that. And as I was reflecting on what you were talking about, when Victoria, it was a great presentation, was going through the list. And we have trash cans on one hand, and then we have like the placer AI data we're going to be able to use from our new economic strategic consultant. So it's like two ends of the scale, but really that's kind of what a healthy downtown looks at. Everything from like the visceral visual as well as the data behind it. So I'll look forward to continuing to use all the tools that we have. And with our economic strategic plan and Director Hinkle in place, we'll be able to look at the bid and see how does it fit in holistically to our overall business generation goals. BID is focused on the downtown. We so appreciate that. And we have economic engines throughout San Rafael. So really, how do we continue to bring them all forward together? And the bid is a big part of that as well as the chamber participation. So thank you. And sorry that you were the last one on the agenda, but look, you got all of our attention. We are like fully, you know, watching you guys and invested in you. So thank you. And with that, I would request a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution confirming the two, two thousand and twenty-two annual report for the downtown business improvement district and levy of assessments for calendar year twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second in, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you all. But we're not leaving yet. Hang on, hang on. We have, we have an additional item on our consent calendar as we had done the first part in a special meeting. This is an item that needs to be part of our regular meeting. So there's only one item on it, so I'm not sure why we would hold it. But does anyone want to hold the one item from the consent calendar?
Nope.
No. And it is the reading, for those watching at home, it's a reading of the ordinance amending the green building codes. So is there any public comment on this item? Okay, not seen any in the room. Is there any virtually who'd like to comment on this item?
I'm seeing no hands raised. I'll give everyone a couple of seconds. I see no public comment.
I'll close the public comment. I request a motion on this item.
I, I moved that we adopt the consent calendar.
Thank you. Moved in second in, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yaden Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. There isn't any San Rafael successor agency, so we'll see you in two weeks. There will be cupcakes because we're doing a swear in, so come in early. Otherwise, this meeting is adjourned. Good night.